No.
Oh. Damn.
Good evening, Dave.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Missing Thursday night football.
I know.
I can put it on the TV if you want.
Thanks, Jim.
Important ones on Sunday, right?
That's right. That's right, Jim. How you been? You doing good?
Yeah, yep.
I, I can't wait till this, uh, to this, till we can go live again, so we can do our meetings live again. I was telling Craig, I gotta talk to Kathy about it.
Yeah, me too. I'll be glad, too.
Maggie will be glad, too.
Can I?
Aw, Jim.
I can have my girlfriends over again.
All right, Dave, I'm gonna mute until the meeting starts. We've got, uh, about eight minutes until...
Okay, Jim. Maggie's, Maggie's gonna go shopping. Thank you, Maggie. Thank you for setting me up.
Well, I'll wait until we get going.
Okay, great. Thank you.
It's good coffee.
Donna!
Hey, turn it down.
Hi, Donna.
Yeah.
Suzie Crossman. Hi, Suzie. Suzie said hi, Maggie. I don't know. She's on somewhere. She's here somewhere.
She's here somewhere?
Yeah. There's Sue.
Oh, hi, Sue.
Hi, Sue.
It's somewhere.
Lisa, hi, Lisa. Hi, Lisa.
Wine. I wish we could have wine delivered to the house. I think you do one in other states.
Oh, I do, too. I know.
If I was governor, that's the first thing I would do.
I know.
Or if I was a legislator, I would propose, you know, being able to do that in Rhode Island, having wine shipped to the house.
Ice coffee.
Good ice coffee.
Good ice coffee.
I like Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, Chick-fil-A is good.
August is fun. Tell Dave to mute the computer. Oh, tell Dave to mute the computer for now, anyway. We can hear everything they're saying.
Okay.
Okay, so what can I say? So just, you know how?
Yep. Kathy!
My video isn't working.
Oh.
Oh.
So. That's all right. I'm here.
Blame it on Dave.
Don't blame it on me.
Oh, boy.
Blame it on Dave.
Steve's office.
Hey, Donna.
Hey, Dave. How you doing?
Good. How are you, Donna?
Much better than I was last Monday.
Oh, I know, huh? That was a long meeting.
No, it wasn't that. I, I actually had hurt my tail, tailbone.
Yeah, it's better.
How'd you do that?
I don't know, but I'll tell you, that was, and it was such a long meeting, and I had to sit the entire time.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah, five hours is a long time.
Yeah. Yeah, but you did a good job, Kathy. You let everybody speak.
Yes. That same point, is that, you know, everybody has a twist.
I suspect we'll have another long meeting tonight.
Yeah, we're gonna have a long one.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So, Jim Murphy, I had a question about the 500 participants.
Yes.
So, again, I assume we are streaming somewhere. I've never actually gone onto that site.
Yes, I actually have the link up on the district homepage right now, so...
Oh, good.
We could probably mention it maybe a couple times during the meeting, that if you're not a Coventry resident or not interested in speaking, that we can go over there. We're only at 127 or so people right now, though, so...
It's still early.
Yes, yep.
So, yeah, as long as the link is there on the website. Is it right there, fully available, people to see?
Yeah, it's right at the top. It's, it's right at the top of the list of new items.
Oh, good. Thank you. I was gonna email you today and ask you that, and I got distracted and got busy with other stuff, so I never, I never followed up, but I figured you had it well in hand, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. Yep. It should be okay. I'll also post the link in the chat as well.
Okay, thanks. That's great. That'd be a good idea, just in case.
So I don't know why my video's not working, but...
It's not my fault.
No, no, no. Um, it could be, Dave.
Have a blank look on your face.
Nah, I know. But I have no idea how to even try to fix it, so, there, you know, I'm here.
Well, we're just waiting for James, so as soon as he shows up, we will start, because I have 6:01.
Jim, do you think if I shut down and reboot, it'll, uh, help, or? That's would be my first recommendation, but it could be a few minutes before you get back in the meeting if you do that. Yeah.
We can wait for you.
We can wait for you, Craig.
No, I don't wanna hold people up.
Okay. So are we ready?
Hey, Kathy.
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
It, it really depends on open meetings, but yes, what would you like to ask?
Can we have a go, can we go live and set the example?
You mean? You mean you wanna go to town hall? No, I'm not ready to go live.
No, I'm thinking the high school auditor, or the auditorium.
No, because you don't know how many people will show up, and if we don't have enough ability to social distance, how would that work, Dave?
Oh, that's right. That's right. You're right. You're right.
No, you can't limit the audience, you know? And besides which, I'm, I'm too old, so I'm like, I don't really wanna go anywhere. Sorry.
Kathy, you're not old. You, you don't, you don't look old and you don't feel old.
Again?
You're not old.
Well, sometimes I'm in, I'm... Okay. All right, I think we can call the meeting to order. I guess Pearson is here, so I'm gonna call them, welcome everyone and all of our attendees in Zoom land. I'd like to call meeting to order. I have 6:03. Could we have a roll call vote, please? A roll call, please?
Yes, Kathy Patnold.
Here.
Dave Florio.
Yeah.
Luke Murray.
Here.
Donna Colonian.
Yeah.
James Pearson.
Here.
Greg Lovis.
Here.
Don Cowett.
Here.
Daramian Giarelli.
Here.
Great, thank you. So I'd like us to have a moment of silence as we consider the work before us this evening. Thank you. I believe, Mr. Pearson, you're on to read the mission of Coventry Public Schools, if you could, please.
Actually, I don't have it in front of me. My apologies. I haven't...
All right.
I was just walking in the door as we started, and I didn't get my agenda up and running.
All right.
Someone else read it, and I'll read it next time. Apologize.
That's okay. Mr. Florio, do you have it in front of you?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair.
If you could do the honors then.
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Pearson, and thank you, Madam Chair. The mission of the Coventry Public Schools is to inspire, support, and challenge all students in an inclusive community to be critical thinkers, effective communicators, reflective learners, responsible individuals, and global citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. I think we move on to Agenda Item Number Two, which is the student entry into a facility during a public health crisis. It was our reference number one. We saw this at our last meeting. We dispensed with the first reading of that particular policy. Are there any questions from the committee or any comments that anyone would like to make about this particular policy? Mr. Lovis and Mr. Pearson, do you have anything to add?
I do not. I think it's very self-explanatory.
Okay.
Same. Nothing to add at this time unless there are questions.
Okay, since it was a reference number one and it was posted on our website, I will call for a motion for to dispense with the second, the second reading.
Madam Chair, make a motion to dispense with the second reading of the student reentry policy. Student en, uh, reading of the student entry into a facility during a public health crisis policy.
I second the motion. Any other further questions? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kathy Patnold.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to the actual adoption of this policy, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the student entry into a facility during a public, public health crisis policy as presented slash amended.
Any questions from the committee? Are there any questions from the attendees that are gathered? I do not see any hands, Mr. Murphy. Do you see any?
No hands raised.
All right, thank you, then. I guess we can call for a roll call vote, please.
Kathy Patnold.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to our second policy of the night, which was our reference number two, again, where we have a dispense of the second reading, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion, uh, of, of the potential policy of following COVID-19 protocols, including mask, oh, no. No, that, no, sorry, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I make a motion, dispense with the second reading of the employer and visitor entry into with facility, no, that's not the one either. Is it? It is? Okay.
Yes.
Dispense with the second reading of, of the employer and visitor entry into a facility during a public health crisis.
I second the motion. Are there any questions from the committee? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Kathy Patnold.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to the actual approval of the policy, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the employer and visitor entry into a facility during a public health crisis policy as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
That's it.
Are there any further questions from the committee members? Are there any questions from the attendees gathered?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. That being said, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Kathy Patnold.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Great. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, the potential policy on following COVID-19 protocols, including mask wearing. So this is a discussion. Mr. Lovis, did you wanna start this?
Sure, just, uh, just quickly, and I apologize, I tried to get on, on the Chromebook, but connectivity isn't that great, so you're gonna have to bear without looking at me tonight. I'm sure that won't displease many people. So this was just brought to my attention. I know the Policy Subcommittee, I think we had, Mr. Pearson and I and Dr. Dixon had talked about this a while ago, questioning if we need to have a policy around, you know, wearing masks, and I believe that the governor has made it clear that masks must be worn. I think that the nurses actually attended a meeting with the Department of Health where they came out and said that the governor's order supersede, like doctors' orders, so if doctors had indicated that children didn't need to wear masks, they would leave that up to a district level, but the, the governor's order would take precedence. So, you know, we figured we'll put this on the, the, you know, just for a quick conversation discussion. You know, I think part of it might be in terms of, you know, where are we gonna draw the line if students just willfully don't wanna wear masks? I believe the governor at first had indicated about not removing students, but I do believe recently she indicated that she would support suspension if students did not wear masks, so, so that's my introduction to this conversation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lovis. I'm just gonna go right down the committee. Mr. Florio, do you have any questions or comments on this particular discussion?
No, Madam Chair, I do not.
Okay. I believe Mr. Murray is next. Do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. So I'm actually one of the ones who actually reached out on this issue, mainly because I know we have students coming back, potentially even faster. While the governor has shifted positions on this issue, and has led some guidance on this issue, I think it would be important that we weigh in as a district on this issue, considering we have so many kids coming back, it's gonna be an emotional time. Whether, you know, obviously, we, we're gonna, there's the potential for violation of, of the safety protocols, and that's obviously not to be dealt with with suspension in every case, but we may get those cases where there's willful, you know, kids just don't wanna wear the mask, students don't wanna comply, and what do we do in those scenarios? And I thought it was important that we provide clarity to administrators at the building level on where we stand on this issue and where their bounds are with addressing these issues. I think it's difficult enough to manage the building without having some clear guidance from the top down on where everyone stands and creating those bounds. If we don't adhere to the DOH guidelines, it's clear that we could end up back in the same situation we were last year. So this is important. My thoughts are, just off the cuff, is that we have a distance learning option. They do not wanna comply, they certainly have that option, and they can go back into distance learning. So, um, that's kinda where I stand and what my concerns were. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mrs. Colonian?
I have no questions at this time. I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Murray, as far as if they don't want to, well, comply with wearing a mask, they, they with the distance learning out there, and I think that's what will happen in most cases, so. So I have to say.
All right, thank you. Mr. Pearson?
I will remind the committee that we're not just talking about high school students here. There was a troubling article in the news today, yesterday. A student in another state showed up to school, and it wasn't his day for in-person learning. He was a distance learning student that day, and they suspended him for five days. Ridiculous. I don't wanna be that committee. To that point, the discipline code and the discipline matrix is not a top-down matrix. I, I agree, top-down guidance is nice. We're not getting any from the state or the Department of Health, or not enough, anyway. But our, our discipline matrix, which is part of our student handbooks and included in there, is, is usually a recommendation from the building leads, and why that's important is because we're not just talking about high school students here. We are talking about pre-K students. We're talking about kindergarten students. We are talking about elementary, middle school, up to high school. The, the, they should not be blindly treated the same way. If a pre-K student or a kindergarten student takes off their mask and refuses to put it on, you have to deal with that in a very different manner than you would a high school student who is being, might be being intentionally defiant, or, or, you know, really, it's our role as, as... I'm not an educator, I'm just on the school committee, but it's, it's our role as being in charge of these students for a period of the day, and in charge of their welfare and overseeing their welfare, to understand why, what they're doing and why they're doing it. So going, going through any kind of mandatory, blind, zero tolerance discipline is, is a little troublesome, even with a pandemic. You know, I'm always in favor of looking at each situation individually and giving discretion to the administrators to, to deal with it as they see best, best fit. That's what we pay them for, really, because they're the best at it, and they're, they have that relationship with the students and the parents. We, as school committee members, do not. So, so I would, I, I'm looking forward to, Mr. Lovis, your, your building leaders, maybe including that in the handbook revisions that we need, need to see in short order, because school starts on Monday, and we still don't have those, and I know there's been some delays with our, our Policy Subcommittee over the past couple weeks, but we really need to, to keep this in mind and put that in as a suggestion for, for when it comes before the committee.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great, great idea, and we do have a Policy Subcommittee, I believe, next Wednesday, I believe we're gonna try to set that up, so that'd be, I know it's a quick turnaround, but I think we could definitely, you know, do that work and get that to the Subcommittee, so we can get it on the next school committee agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pearson and Mr. Lovis. My feelings on the matter is that I, I tru, I truly believe that the principals, the administrators in the buildings are the ones that will decide what kind of discipline action, and I think coming from the handbooks from the individual schools is probably the way to go. And the fact that, that, again, we can't treat every kid the same way, but I am a huge proponent of wearing masks, so I am hopeful that when most of our students are back, or just the beginnings of our students are back, that they will in fact follow policy and, and, and wear their masks, and not try to make some kind of political statement by not wearing a mask because their parents perhaps told them they didn't have to wear one at school. So that would be my only concern. So I understand Mr. Murray's concern on the matter, but I think unless the building administrators ask us outright to develop a, a policy, then I think we can leave it in the handbooks, and, and hopefully, those will be updated in with each building's requiring, building administrator requirements on what would happen if a student decides to defy an administrator. So, Mr. Murray, did you wanna say something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mr. Pearson for his thoughtful comments. I actually think he makes some good points. The point of bringing up this discussion wasn't necessarily to advocate for a policy. I think the handbook's a good approach. I just want, I would prefer the school committee at least weigh in on where we stand, so we're supporting our administrators before it becomes an issue, and that's the biggest thing, is they don't feel like we're not backing them up if they create a policy at the building level or in the handbook, and then, you know, things go sideways, that we're aware of it, we're in unison in our voices, that's all. So I appreciate the comments and the, the alternate approach, and hopefully, if they want that support, they will integrate it into the handbook.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murray. I see we have one hand up, Mr. Murphy, before we move on. Does someone wanna speak to this discussion?
I'll bring them in. Okay, Cole, if you could just state your full name and address to the record and unmute your microphone. Okay, Colby, if you could just state your full name and address to the record and unmute your microphone. Okay, I'm going to move on to the next person. Kelly, you're up. If you could state your full name and address to the record.
Kelly Aronakis, nine Sugar Maple Drive. I would just ask the committee to consider that when you leave it up to, I think Kathy said, the individual schools, you're going to have different policies or different protocols or procedures within different handbooks. And I think consistency is what we always strive for. I'm a little concerned. I agree with Mr. Pearson. I don't want to unilaterally punish kids, for lack of a better word. But I think we need to look at that while science is pretty clear in saying that wearing a mask does not prevent you from catching COVID, but it does prevent the spread. I know Ms. Pat noted, you said you were old. I have many teachers that are over 60 in Coventry. Unfortunately, some of those teachers are in kindergarten and they are walking in on Tuesday with 21 to 22 students in front of them. The social distancing doesn't happen when there's that many kids in the classroom and wearing masks is imperative. So unfortunately, there are children that will push back, that try to defy. And those students do need to be removed for the safety of the teachers and the other students. I expect when I send my son to school in a mask, that everyone's wearing them. So I would ask that we don't leave it up to individuals to have different policies. It's a health and a safety issue for the adults more so than the kids, but it's also a health and safety issue for the kids. Now, if students have severe medical issues, social emotion issues, obviously there's caveats in the real world for that as well. But whether it's a fifth, a five-year-old student, a 10-year-old student or a 17-year-old student, if they're told they have to wear a mask and they blatantly refuse, they should not be allowed to stay in that classroom to possibly harm others. So I'm going to disagree, leaving it up to the individuals to do what they want. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I make a quick comment? I just, just wanted to point out that a few years ago, we standardized our handbooks. So the discipline codes across the elementary schools, for example, they're, they're the same. The content is the same, the discipline matrix is the same. So it's not that each individual school would have its own set of rules or ways of handling situations. Where that differs again is the middle school has its own handbook and the high school.
Yeah. And I just want to say this, going through the handbook is, it's still approved. It's, it'll be consistent. You know, it's no different than the discipline code that has to be approved. So I think we're saying the same thing.
And we have often, sorry to interrupt, Craig, we have often challenged the discipline code. So, so yes, you know, it's not a rubber stamp.
No, no, no. But what I'm saying is that it gives clear guidance and expectation. So, you know, we still plan on making these environments safe and we're not going to. There was a, you know, comment in the chat about just letting kids not wear masks and setting the tone. And, you know, we're doing the same thing with adults too, making sure that, you know, it's about, about modeling and behavior. So we want something that's going to provide safety first. So I think we accomplish the same thing. It's just putting it in the handbook that has to come back for the school committee, just like a policy would.
Florio, I see you're.
Madam Chair, I agree with Mrs. Aronakis. I think it should be, teachers should be, teachers should be wearing masks and they should be modeling the behavior for, especially for preschool kids and kindergarten kids and in the elementary grades. They really need to wear their masks. And that's, that's just how I feel about it, Madam Chair. That's what I think as a school committee member, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. I think we're running out of time in the sense of actually, maybe actually writing something into the handbook. I'm not sure how fast that can be done. Perhaps, Mr. Levis, you, I agree with Kelly that, and Mr. Pearson, that it's something that will go into our handbooks and will be the same code for all three separate levels of education, elementary, middle and high. I'm not sure how we get there starting school on Monday. So if one of the.
So our, our expectation is that everybody's going to wear masks. So, I mean, I don't want to, we're going to address that, but I think we need to, you know, put something in the handbook very quickly so that it's very clear. Because as Mr. Pearson said, in, in, you know, in the defense of the policy subcommittee, and I know the high school had already revised, but we have so many new policies. We need to update the handbook with those policies. We will not let students not wear masks. But I was in a kindergarten class today with a kindergarten teacher. How they're going to address that isn't like the mask is off and then the student's out. So, you know, whereas we have a defiant high school student that just blatantly refused. So we are going to enforce that before the, you know, and we have, the governor's given us the ability to do that. But to have a policy or a guidance that's clear cut. And if you look at our discipline codes, our discipline codes do give some flexibility in terms of the situation. So, you know, nothing is black and white. However, we have to look and see that, you know, at the situation. But I want to be clear that if I am being told that there's an individual who continuously refuses to wear a mask, we will address that. And you know, we're going to get pushed back no matter what kind of policy we have. There will be some type of pushback and we just have to, again, as Kelly said, look at, look at, you know, safety first. And, but I'm not going to say that, like, obviously how we handle a kindergarten student will be different than a high school senior. And that's just makes, that's common sense. You know, and these are, this is going to be the challenge that every district deals with. So I think it's important that we speak about it. We're starting off, again, another reason for us to start off, you know, limited. It allows us to really look at our policies, look at our practices, protocols and, and, you know, and improve them over time. So I'm sure this is one that will be tested right away and we'll be, we'll be addressing it when we come back to the next school committee meeting. But, you know, everything we've done has been about student and staff safety continuously. And we're going to continue to do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Levis. Are there any other attendees? I see some hands up still, Mr. Murphy.
Okay, Hillary, you're up next. If you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Hi, Hillary Connors, St. Wood, Miss Circle. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make, I don't know if everyone's aware, I'm assuming everyone's aware, but go on the record and say that I was really disappointed that the district decided to state that masks are not mandatory for pre-K. As someone who works with children and works with special needs children, I understood that sending my child to school and in the preschool, which he's in, would mean that some kids would not be tolerating their masks or they'd be taking it off. But that I understood would be something like in my district that I work in, that would be worked on and you would build up tolerance to it. And so I think that sending out a message to pre-K parents that you're not required is just sending a message that they're not even going to try. And that's disappointing. So I just wanted to share that.
Yeah, I just want to say that's not, we're definitely, our protocol, our process is exactly what you just described. All we're saying is where it's mandated every place else, we're going to suggest and try in the preschool, they already going to help let them design their own mask. So we definitely are going to do that. So I just want to be clear that I, you know, because we're taking a stance that where it's mandatory every place else, we're following like the early childhood guidelines where we're going to do the same thing, build tolerance and hoping that, you know, families have done, then done that also. So I just want to be clear that that's not the message we want to convey. You know, we, we've already talked about that. I've been in conversations. So just to clarify that, we are going to follow the same protocol that you're probably following, following in your district.
Yes, I, I, I just saying that I don't know that all parents understand that when you send out a large message that says they're recommended but not required.
But that's, yeah, but that's the truth. And I think that's the truth in many, you know, I can't speak for your district. I don't know where it is, but I know there are other districts where that, they're following the same guidance. You know, we've been involved with state pre-K and what they're doing. So I just want to be clear that we can clarify that, but I want to be clear that we're doing the same that you're doing. So I'm going to try to, you know, make sure that, you know, we can build that in. So just, again, just want to clarify.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Thank you, Hillary. Is there anybody else, Mr. Murphy?
Yes, we have Colby again. Hey, Colby, you're up. If you could unmute your microphone and state your name and address to the record, please. Colby? Okay, the hand is lowered, so I think we're done.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murphy. All right, I think we can move on then to agenda item number six, which is the Coventry Public Schools reopening plan update. No, no, I'm sorry, number five. I must have been giving, being a heart attack here. The Coventry Public Schools air quality update discussion.
So if you don't mind, I'll lead into it. Yes, I apologize. And I apologize again for not having video. I have no, no idea why it's not coming up. But anyways, I just want to introduce Jeannie Reddy. Jeannie is from Creative Environment Corporation from Cranston. She's been so helpful with, to us in these last couple of weeks. I do want to say that they were hit just a few days ago with ransomware, like we were hit a year ago. So Jeannie's here. Everything that they have in terms of documents, and I don't want to get into too much, but just to kind of segue into, she's going to be doing a verbal update tonight. And she'll be coming back with a more thorough, you know, as the committee had asked before, like good, better, best. You know, we're putting in place right now that what we need to do to open school, you know, limited to open school as we talk in the next agenda item are phased. And then there are things that are ongoing. You know, there's been spaces that have been identified. Just example, an area in Western Coventry, when they put those EVR machines, evidently they ran out of money, didn't put a machine in which, you know, is impacting ventilation in a few areas, which we're not going to use till we can, you know, figure this, this out. But we'll be able to, to open school, but it's just spaces we're not going to be able to use. So again, just a little background information, you know, we, we all know about Dr. Bromage that was brought in to the ASAM Messer School in Providence. Jason went, maybe 30 districts or 30 individuals went. And that's when the red flag came up for me about air quality and how important it is in terms of the transmission of COVID-19. So we kind of hit the pause button. About a week later, we were invited to a presentation put on by the School Building Authority. And I think it's Fielding, Fielding International, I believe, is, is the architects. They also, they had brought on Jeannie as a consultant and she spoke very concisely about air quality. And after her presentation, again, it brought back some more concerns. Mr. Joe De Silva, Dr. Joe De Silva from RIDE and the School Building Authority had stated every district should hire, he recommended every district hire a consultant, an expert. So my thoughts were, let's get the person that RIDE had hired. And so we were fortunate, it took us a week to kind of, you know, work the details out. And literally I called Jeannie on a, on a Friday. I begged her to come out the following week and she made her calendar available, had spent time with our building principals, with Mr. Martin, even Ms. Aronakis spent some time in, in the middle school. And my ask for her was, can you, this is our limited plan. Can you identify places in our school that are safe? She went around the buildings, took pictures, looked at plans of our systems, also had some, some plans that we didn't have because some of the consultants had worked on our, some of our HVAC systems or electrical systems previously now work for Creative Environment. So tonight I asked her because there is no presentation. She's going to give an overview of where we're at, but I thought it's important to come back. We're opening school. Again, I wanted to thank her. This is an ongoing process. But tonight I wanted her just to be able to answer questions, talk a little bit about the work that, some of the work that we've done that Jason's initiated that actually has helped us out. And that the spaces that we're using, at least in our initial phases, you know, getting, hopefully getting, you know, elementary students in over a period of time and getting our middle school students in. That, you know, we have a lot of space that's really good at the middle school and high school. We were concerned about interior space at the high school, but some of the work that's being done right now has made that a good space. So, you know, I'm very positive about where we stand. You know, there's a lot of concerns about the middle school. And while we know the school building committee is focusing, you know, on that, and I'm sure there'll be more to come forward with committee, in terms of COVID-19, because that's what this is all about. In terms of transmission of COVID-19 and the role that ventilation plays in filtration, I think we're, we're in good shape. In fact, Jeannie will talk about humidity is our friend when it comes to this. So, you know, all the concerns we have, I was walking around the buildings today, a couple of, I was soaking wet. And I kept saying to people, you know, like, but humidity is our friend when it comes to COVID-19. So I just want to, again, I appreciate Jeannie coming on board and especially with everything that's transpired with her company. They've lost, you know, I think everything's been, been, you know, encapsulated. So that's kind of my segue. I just want to, again, thank her so much for, for, for taking this on. We're one of maybe three districts. Newport contacted me today and I gave them Jeannie's name. I know a couple of news stations have reached out. You know, I think, you know, we, we took a little heat. I know our governor had said air quality is not a reason to not come into school. And, you know, I'm not the governor, but as superintendent, I disagree. But I'm, I'm happy that we've taken this stance. I'm happy that the committee supported that. And I'm happy, Jeannie, that, you know, again, we have a relationship, this is ongoing. So I will be quiet and turn it over to Jeannie.
Thank you, Craig. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So thank you for hiring us to, to review your buildings. I, I will say we've walked every single one of the buildings and comparatively your buildings are in much, much better condition than many other school districts out there. Your facilities department has done a great job of taking advantage of the time from when the students left the school and the buildings were empty to go through and make sure that all of the fans were working and those that weren't working were replaced or repaired. So that's one of the first big steps that needs to be taken is to, to go through and do the, the maintenance, the deferred maintenance and, and make sure that all the fans are up and running. And you guys were already right on top of that going into this review. So another thing that was very well done was the, the decision to add some automatic temperature controls in the high school, I believe it's in the D section of the building. Those are the interior classrooms and that's what's handled by the rooftop unit in the penthouse. So the new temperature controls that will handle that area, take all of those controls off of the old outdated pneumatic system and put them on a new DDC control system. That's a web-based control system that allows for monitoring and trending of the data. So the trending is important going forward in all of the spaces because that's how you record what happens continuously in a space, whether it's temperature, humidity or carbon dioxide. And those are, those are three factors that tell you how well your system is operating. It also lets you know how, whether or not you have a space that's not being ventilated properly because the CO2 levels will get up to 1,000, 1,100, much, much higher in some cases. There are plenty of reports out there on school districts and how, how bad the air quality is across the country, especially with CO2 levels. So the controls that have been put in will monitor that, not in every single classroom in some cases because those, those spaces are zoned on heating coils in the, in the ceiling. So it's only every second or third, maybe four classrooms in some cases. on heating coils in the, in the ceiling. So it's only every second or third, maybe four classrooms in some cases in the, in the high school that are monitored that way. But at least it's a snapshot and it's, and it's a lot better than, you know, what you had prior to that. There are some unit ventilators there that are also on that new system. So that will also be helpful in, in getting a feel for how, how well those systems are working. The systems that you put in at the, a number of the elementary schools a few years ago, 1991, it was more than a few years ago now, I think. No, 2013, with the energy recovery units. So it was Tyo, Blackrock, and a couple of others. Those systems are also very, very good. And are doing a lot for you as far as making so many classrooms that would not have been usable. Those, those now meet the requirements. In particular for the outdoor air ventilation per person numbers. So because you're getting 400 CFM per classroom on those, the state's recommendation was 15 CFM per person of outdoor air. Those unit ventilators are really doing a lot of work in getting you full occupancy in those spaces. The number of air changes per hour is a little bit different in that situation. But all of your classrooms in those elementary school buildings appear to be fine for, for occupancy with the one exception of Washington, Washington Oaks, which was the, the area that Craig spoke about where they didn't have the money to put in that last energy recovery unit. It was value engineered out of the project.
Jeannie, that was Western, Western Coventry.
I'm, I'm sorry, thank you. Western Coventry, not Washington. You know, Washington is all new. So that's, that building is fine as well. Your middle school and high school have tons of flex space. Where when you do come back at full occupancy, even if you have classrooms that don't allow for full occupancy in an individual classroom, you have so much space available in those buildings to spread kids out. And I know in a lot of cases right now, they're not going to have chorus or band necessarily full time in those classrooms, unfortunately. Those classrooms are, are nice, big spaces where you can put a lot of students. Also, some of the shop areas, you know, there would need to be some safeties in place as far as lockout, tagout on some of the, some of the wood and metal working equipment, if you do put other students in, in the shop spaces. But you do have a lot of very good spaces with ventilation and air handling units. I know that all the MIR 13 filters have been ordered, but, you know, from two different companies, trying to see whose order comes in first. So you're, you're right on, on target for that. I don't, I don't have any other specific concerns that I've seen in walking all the buildings with your classroom spaces, other than to say those, those few that didn't have the ventilation. There's just a couple in the high school where an addition was put on and the outdoor air was blocked off and, and not met some other way. And then those, those few classrooms at the elementary school. Other than that, you're in, you're in very good shape. Some of the interior classrooms, not classrooms, but spaces like libraries and cafeteria. Some of those do have good ventilation and can be used as a classroom or even to, to split the room in half, maybe with bookshelves and put two separate classes in there. If you had some, some small groups that needed to meet in there or a classroom that needed to be vacated, to be cleaned and sanitized, you could move kids out into those spaces temporarily to, to have as flex space. You know, for those kinds of uses. Any of the very small group rooms or the offices, those spaces you might want to have some supplemental type systems in. It, it may not be necessary if there's only one or two people in there. But if you end up having groups of like four or five people in those spaces, then supplemental HEPA filters are very, are very good at capturing a lot of, of the particulate that's dispersed in aerosol product by this virus. We looked at every building to identify spaces for isolation rooms as well. And to figure out what accommodations would need to be made in those rooms to create negative pressure spaces. So that where the students who are ill are isolated from each other and are also they're kept in a of the room that's under a negative pressure as compared to where the nurse is. So that any of the aerosol vapors that, that they may emit, if they do in fact have the virus, are exhausted from those spaces. Those accommodations were being made as we were walking through the building. Arrangements were being made to have either larger exhaust fans put in or additional exhaust fans installed and partitions set up. So that, that was progress as, as we walked through last week. I, I didn't have any other specific concerns, to be perfectly honest. I, I am unfortunately not able to access any of my hard drive right now. I just got my email back today, thankfully. But I am working on the report offline and will, will be able to keep working on it offline until my systems are back up and running.
Madam Chair, can I just say one, one other part is that, you know, this, like I said, I, I want to thank Jeannie for coming in. And this is an ongoing process. Like, we wanted to make sure. I knew I was asking staff to come in this week. We knew we were starting. So you know, in some areas I had different, you know, my head, different expectations. Jeannie and I spoke today in talking about some of our, some other districts. And, you know, we know that our schools are old. We know that there hasn't been, other than some of the, like the boiler, the roof work, it was like $200,000 that has been put into capital, which did the HVAC system at the high school right now in, in the last 10 years. So it was good to see that despite, in terms of our, you know, we have a lot of work to do. We know that. But in terms of, you know, how we address COVID-19 and ventilation and, and, you know, in our, in our district that we were in, in, in pretty good shape. Because I, I don't know how other districts, and again, I don't want to point out other districts, but when there's only three or four districts that have done this, I don't know how other districts are able to say you know, that their spaces meet the requirement. So again, I want to thank Jeannie. But this is ongoing. She's going to look more in depth at, at our systems to make recommendations. I'm hoping that as we go forward with the School Building Committee, Mr. Murray, that this information will also be helpful to us. I know other districts that have a bond going. They're seeing how they can put this into the bond. For us, I know Ms. Mandrelli had put a significant amount of money in terms of COVID, so that we can bring all this in, this back. But, you know, I'm just very pleased that we're in this position right now. So when, as we start, at least with our, our transition into the elementaries and then special programs, we're really good shape right now. So again, I want to just thank her for your, for your help and assistance.
You're welcome.
I couldn't agree more. So I'm just going to go down the line and have any member from the committee have any comments, questions for Jean. Is it Jean or Jeannie? What do you go by?
You can go either. Either name is fine. I respond to both, so.
Okay, all right. So Mr. Florio, do you have any questions or comments?
Jean, when you looked at the high school, there were some classes that have no windows. And they're they don't, they don't have, it's just a classroom and there's, there's no egress ring, there's no way to get in or out of the room. Is what, what is the air quality in that kind of space? With no windows?
So I think the spacious specifically talking about is that that D area that's served by the penthouse unit. And that penthouse unit is what provides ventilation air to those spaces. So the outdoor air that's being supplied by that unit up on the roof can be varied from wide open, which is called economizer cycle, which provides 100% outside air all the time. Or it can be modulated down to minimum position, which is generally used if you're if the outside air temperatures are either too warm or too cold to provide free cooling. The economizer cycle is isn't originally intended to use as free cooling. Right now, it's being used in all of your classrooms. The, the building controls have been commanded to full 100% outside air, which is economizer cycle, to try to over ventilate the spaces to get as much outside air into the spaces as possible. So that's another step that's already been taken in all of the school buildings is that they're, they're forced into economizer and, and held there right now. Your problem's going to come up, just like everyone's, when it gets cold outside. And in a lot of your buildings, the colder temperatures will not be as risky because you have either gas heat serving the space or electric heat. So you're not going to freeze any coils. If you have electric heat, you're just going to end up running into a point where the electric heat can't keep up to keep the space warm. That's, that's a problem for down the road to, to deal with. But right now, your, your spaces are all being ventilated at 100% outside air, including that D area where the new controls are put in.
Thank you, Jeannie. Thank you very much. I just, I just needed an explanation on that for myself. Thank you. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay.
All set, Mr. Florio?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Murray.
Thanks for your work, Jean. To Dig's point, if we throttle down from a full open position, heading towards winter, because we may, I'm assuming we may have to because of heat and whatnot. What is the, are we going to get sort of guidance on what the minimum percentage is? Or is that going to be preset in the system? And what's our airflow exchange if we have to throttle it down from full because it's just too cold?
So that's part of the calculations that I'm, I'm continuing to work on. All the units are different. So each unit is a different CFM size. And so the percentage of outside air that you can reasonably run through the unit with the capacity of the heating system that's in each unit is going to be different. You can get upwards of 50% outside air through a unit if it's electric heat or gas. Just you're, you're leaving air temperature, your supply air temperature will will come down, in some cases, it'll only come down to room temperature, which may be fine during occupied times. If it's just providing 70 or 72 degree air, that may be fine. In spaces that have hot water coils, there is a safety on those called a freeze stat. And you can only allow the air temperature to come down just so far before you'll trip the freeze stat. In a lot of cases, that's going to be probably about 30%, maybe closer to 40%. It, it really varies by, by individual units. So there's a lot to look at.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's in the weeds. It's just something that I want to make sure. And I'm sure you're going to do the calculations and have a report with guidance to Jason and his team to start preparations. Because as you said, winter is going to look very different on how the system is controlled. And I know specifically at the high school, we've had issues with just the temperatures. And it'll be 40 degrees in one room. When you go into another, it's 90. So I, I think those, there's a little difference in how, the reason for that. But I believe it's, you know, it's all related to the fact that we have varying systems and varying controls as well. So that's a concern. You mentioned Western, the fact that the, the energy recovery units were value engineered out. How does that impact the school's ability to reopen or, you know, what measures are required there versus the other elementaries?
In that school, there were originally supposed to be two energy recovery units. They installed one in the oldest portion of the building. Upstairs, you can see that the ductwork is run exposed through the spaces. But it's down in, in a wing that was built at sometime in the 70s, I believe. That was the space that it got value engineered out of. So to make accommodations to have classes in that wing, you'll need to add some fans to the windows. Or in preparation of, of this going longer term, looking at some ERVs. You can do individual ERVs in spaces or another central system like what was supposed to be installed originally.
Okay. Well, I mean, it's, it's a good point. I mean, that's one of our oldest schools. I think it's the oldest school, correct me if I'm wrong. But at least the old wing is. I, I know that the, the old, old building is actually, in my, in my opinion, the best part because it has the high ceilings. It's got all the ductwork.
Yeah.
And then the addition is your standard single floor addition with lower ceilings and poor ventilation.
Right.
So I'm assuming you'll have specific recommendations on that specific school to improve air quality?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we will.
I think that's it for now. I don't want to get too in the weeds. But I thank you for your work. I'll be looking forward to the report. And it's good to hear even the work you're doing. I'm chairing the Building Committee for the Stage Two of RIDE. And we can incorporate a lot of what you find into what Studio Jade's doing. And hopefully address some of this, if we can't do it now, long-term through the Building Committee's efforts and submission to RIDE. So thank you. And, and just keep, keeping that, I know Craig has mentioned that, but keeping that in mind also on long-term improvements, larger capital improvements that we can weave in for the building effort would be extremely helpful.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murray. Mrs. Koonian, any questions or comments?
No, I just want to thank you, Jeannie, for doing that. I, I was pleasantly surprised that we didn't need as much work as we thought in the beginning. But I, I basically had pretty much the same questions about the, the high school with the interior classroom. So I'm glad that you answered that. And I don't think I have anything else.
Okay.
All right, thank you, John. And finally, Mr. Pearson.
You have a question, but I, I don't even know who can answer this anymore because it's, it's about an older issue. In 2012, the town passed a million dollar bond for improvements to heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems at our schools. Does anyone, Mr. Levis is, I guess, I'm not going to ask you to produce it now, of course. Could, could you look into what was actually done? What work was done for this bond? I'm just out of, I'm just curious what was done. And, and, you know, for the consultant, I know the consultant is looking directly at our buildings. Have they been getting, given our maintenance and improvement records over the past several years so they know what work has been done? So will they, when they're walking in, they, they know what to expect? Yes, Jean, Jean, you can answer that question. What information were you given when you walked into our buildings?
So I have building plans from quite a few of the buildings. And we have we will have access to looking at the trends on the, the buildings that do have electronic controls. So the, the Andover control systems at the high school and a couple of the elementary school locations. We haven't reviewed those yet. In, upon walking in the school, it was, it was the plans that we had given and the observation of each system. And I think the, the ERVs may have been the result of that money that you're talking about. I, I, I will let someone who actually knows answer that. But I, the timeline seems to fit.
It's so long ago. That's why I, I won't, I won't ask for it tonight. But in the future, if I could.
Mr. Pearson, I just want to say, I know there were boilers that those, and those systems, those, I don't know what you call them, electronic systems to manage the boilers, like at the high school and because I remember coming on board, that was the big push, the boilers and the roofs and some of the energy efficiency.
Yeah, there was a, there was a separate bond passed for roofs. There was a separate bond for energy efficiency. The, the ventilation bond was a specific bond.
Okay.
That was passed by voters in 2012.
All right.
I know it's before your time, before my time on School Committee. I think Kathy is probably the only one who was here. But she, she probably doesn't remember. I wouldn't ask her to remember something.
We can, we can pull that together.
Just, just out of curiosity. But no, I want to, Jean, thank you for the work you've done and look forward to seeing some of these reports in writing. I guess my expectation from, from having a consultant on board is that all these, these ventilation, I don't want to call them strategies, but plans. but plans and procedures moving forward for efficiency will be documented and given to our facilities department so they can manage this as best they can moving forward?
Absolutely. And they are strategies. There's a lot of layers that are involved.
Terrific. Thank you again for your work. I have no more questions at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. So I was here when that bond was passed. And what I do remember of it was there was some work done at Western especially, but that there were ventilation issues in some of the elementaries that were in fact improved, which is why maybe your analysis has come back better than what we might have expected, because our buildings are old, some of them anyway. But I do think there was some work done, you know, during that particular bond that did in fact alleviate that. I think we're all sort of, we're not experts. We're glad that you're on board. At least the school committee people aren't experts. Obviously, Jason Martin knows what he's doing. So I guess I'm really, really pleased that we did in fact go ahead to hire an expert and that you'll be able to give us a report once your computers are up and running again. Sorry to hear about your attack on your system.
Thank you.
So my final thing is that I think people sometimes have felt in this community that because teachers and students complain about heat issues and it's too hot or too cold, that's not really, that's something somehow different from ventilation per se. And so I really don't know the difference in some ways, but I do know air change coming in. If I opened up all my windows right now, I wouldn't have air conditioning, but I'd have good ventilation probably. So again, coming into the fall and winter, it will be imperative that, you know, those kind of studies get looked at as well when we do have to start shutting down some of the airflow. But it's really nice to know that we do have the capacity to have pretty good air exchange in our classrooms. And there's only a few that seem to have any real particular problems. So we look forward to the report and we thank you for coming on board. And I don't have any further comments, but I do think I see some hands raised.
Madam Chair, can I just, can I just say one thing before we turn over the public? Just add, part of this too is looking at, you know, originally they were saying there needed to be like six air exchanges. And now the state is saying four. So part of what Jeanne's been doing is looking at that too. So looking at, you know, she's talking about the fifteen cubic feet, but also the air exchanges, because I know that's something people had put in their comments. And so we looked at that. There's a couple of places maybe where, you know, Jeanne was talking about, you know, like real precise calculations that may have to be done. And we have time to do that in terms of, you know. But so she looked at all of our environments, taking that in consideration also. So like I said, this is ongoing work. There may be some spaces at the high school we need to look at. We need to, you know, again, that space at Western Coventry, you know, Ms. Mandrelli had put just ballpark a half million dollars down. And, you know, we're talking about getting ourselves in school. But as we look into the wintertime, there may be adjustments. We may have to purchase HEPA filters for certain spaces and things like that. So, you know, one of those, that bond that Mr. Pearson was talking about, paid for like the chiller at the high school, the EVR machines, those controls that, you know, the computerized control of the systems to make it more efficient. I know those were part of, you know, as it, that were part of that, I believe, that bond in 2012, 2013. So there's going to be ongoing work. And so while it's good, you know, for us right now, as we approach wintertime, there may be adjustments. We may need to, you know, as Mr. Murray had asked that question about each room, or Jeanne had mentioned, each room is different. We're going to have to figure out what exactly is that adjustment. And that's going to cost money because we need to get, there are only a few people, my understanding, that can do some of that work in the state. And, you know, so not only doing the work, but having the availability. So while it may sound like, oh, we're not going to have to spend a half million dollars, I'm concerned that a half million dollars could, you know, because we have a large, a lot of buildings, maybe not, you know, suffice. But again, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Levis. Thank you, Mr. Levis. Mr. Murphy, do we have any hands raised?
Yes. Ian, you'll be first. If you could just state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Hi, Ian Smith, Ten Rankton Farm Drive. I just had a question, if the air quality results vary based on how many people are in a classroom? You know, if there were twenty, twenty-five students in a classroom versus twelve to fifteen students, does that play a role in air quality? And also, out of curiosity, based on some things I saw today, and will come up later, does twenty-plus people eating lunch in a classroom change air quality recommendations?
So as far as the number of people in the classroom, yes, it does change the air quality. When everyone wears their mask, it impacts it less. When you have the fifteen air changes per person based on twenty, twenty-five people in a classroom, those numbers are meant to maintain the air quality at acceptable levels. So whether there's fifteen students in the classroom or twenty, it shouldn't have a dramatic impact on the classroom in that way. Eating, obviously, you need to take your mask off. I'm not really sure how that's all going to be handled. But when you're not wearing your mask, it's a different, it's a different set of conditions.
Okay. And then just as a follow-up, across the whole building, if half the people are in the building versus the entire building population, student body, that would be beneficial to everyone in the building?
The less density that you have in any space is always going to improve the air quality. So whether it's a large group in a very large space, like a gymnasium, you could put forty people in there and not have a problem. If you have forty people in a smaller classroom, it's going to be a problem. So yes, if you have only half the people in the building, that's definitely going to improve the air quality overall.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Murphy?
Okay, I think we have one more. Colby, if you could unmute your mic and state your name and address for the record. I'm going to move on to the next person. I think this person may be having a problem with their computer. Deb, you're next. If you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Hi, Deb Tyree, Seventy-six Coventry Drive. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm sitting here obviously very invested in this, seeing how I'm going to be going back to a class of twenty, twenty-one kids on Monday. And the plan is that we're going to be eating lunch in that classroom, in that one space. And I know that my colleagues are equally concerned about the classroom situation in their own schools. How is this going to be okay? Twenty-one kindergartners eating in a space. We do not have desks at Washington. We have tables. So twenty-one kids facing each other with maybe a divider between them if they come in, all at the same time with their masks off, eating at that same very time, where we're all in that same space. How is that being allowed? Are we not going to, are we just going to ignore the fact that this is going to happen on next Thursday? Are we going to keep talking around the issue? We have a pandemic going on, guys. You can spin it any way you want. This is not a good idea. We are not ready to open. You can keep saying that we are, but every expert that's on TV, every expert you bring in keeps telling us differently, unless they want to play the narrative that the governor is playing.
So can I answer that question, just unless you're not done, Deb?
I just, Craig, I'm not comfortable with this situation. And every time, every time something is brought up, everyone says, well, we're going to deal with it. We're kicking the can down the road.
I disagree completely, Deb, that we kick the can down the road, you know. And if you've watched.
We just got done talking about ventilation and how in, what, a month, a month and a half, we're going to have issues that, well, we'll deal with maybe next month.
We're dealing with them now. We're dealing with them now. We're one of three or four districts that have actually taken a step. And the other part is, I think we've been putting the pause button much more than other districts. Our union, your union, eight other districts, superintendents, we met together. And we stuck to what we say we're going to do. Not everybody else has. So again, you can look at the RIDE guidance, right? Just saying, well, if you don't want to do that, have half the kids eat. Have the other half. Find another space to go. So there's things that we can do. And you're right, we are going to continue to look into problem solve. But I disagree that what all the experts are saying, I think actually, we've been hitting the pause button. I'm not a medical person, but Dr. Alexander Scott is just saying, everybody can go back. Well, we're not saying, you know, we're not saying that.
Okay, you can keep explaining it, Craig, but the bottom line is, the classroom that I am going back to next Thursday will have twenty to twenty-one kids in it, less than, less than three feet apart, sitting at tables. And now the person who you brought in to advise has said, that could be a problem with them eating with their masks off. Okay, we'll again find another space. I don't know where that space is going to be because Washington, we're all in that same boat. Though, yeah, maybe we can go outside if it's not raining. Maybe we can bring the kids to the library. I don't know. But the bottom line is, it doesn't sound like we're prepared, and that's my concern. And I think parents need to realize that what we're talking about is classrooms where children are stacked into our rooms, less than two feet apart. We are trying. I am trying. I think out of the classrooms at Washington, mine actually has a pretty good setup. My tables are two to three feet apart. I was anticipating, hoping that we were going to have less than twenty to twenty-one kids. That's not the case. That means that I have every single table in my room right now has two kids at it with one of my tables with three children at it. And when I brought the concern up, it's poo-pooed, basically. Everyone keeps saying, oh, well, kindergarten's different. I don't know. I joke. I say, obviously, we're the Teflon grade. It's just going to slide right off. Everyone else is talking about, you can't tell me that it's not being addressed in other communities. Other communities, some of them are saying, we're not going back. So I'm sorry, I respectfully disagree with you. We are not ready to do this.
And like I said, I'll respectfully disagree with you, Deb. And I think we've been taking precautions and we will take more, you know. This is going to be an ongoing process. So, you know, our goal is to problem solve. You know, I don't have the luxury of saying, we're just done. You know, we've been working through problems since March thirteenth, and I'm going to continue to do that. You know, I've never said, this is just the way it's going to be, and we're going to, and then we're going to continue to move forward that way. But digging your heels and just saying blatantly that we're not ready, I disagree. We put a lot of thought. We continue. We continue to dialogue. And I don't want to make this a personal going back and forth, but, you know, you make strong statements, and I feel that I have to make strong statements also that this is going to be an ongoing problem solving process. And I think when Don presents on the, you know, the reentry plan phase, and we're going to talk about that. We want people to understand that this is not the six feet social distancing that people may think, the gold standard. That doesn't exist anymore, you know. And you were on that call yesterday when we were with Kelly. So we're trying to navigate this whole situation and do what we need to do to make sure that we do it in the best manner possible. And I believe we're doing that. So. But if there's other things we need to problem solve, we will continue to do it. But this is going to be a year of problem solving. This is not going to be like the past, you know. And I think we all, you know, need to understand that. But safety is going to drive this. And has.
Okay. I, again, I can respectfully disagree with you. When I hear things like, we're going to have open door policies. In other words, I can open the door to my classroom, and that opens up another whole thing about active shooter training and active shooter policy that clearly isn't on the forefront right now. However, it is still very much out there in people's minds. And I think that as much as I know you have been working very hard, your whole team has been working hard. I think everyone has done their very best to kind of put things out there and get together a firm plan. I think people need to be very real about what it is that we are facing and that it is not a gold standard. You're right about that. But in the situation of, are we going to risk getting sick and infecting others and ending up on ventilators and all of this other stuff that is very real out there? I'm concerned, and I have to say it out loud, I have to say it to advocate for the people who are calling me, I know you're getting phone calls too, but calling me and texting me on a daily basis, Kelly's getting slammed. We're all trying to handle this. But you need to understand that we can't keep presenting it like this is what's, you know, this is what's best. This is what's necessary, maybe. I agree with you. We have to do it. It's for the governor. I understand that. I'm not, I don't live in a little bubble here. However, I think we need to stop giving it lip service and call it what it is. So thank you for your time.
Yeah, I just want to say, I don't believe in lip service to anybody, you know. I, most of the time, I feel like I'm an island, to be honest with you. So I don't consider this lip service. We reflect every single day. There's pushback every day. We step back. So, you know, and we've discussed, so we've talked about switching one safety for the other in terms of understanding. That came about, we had that conversation, was about having tents and everybody just go outside. So, you know, I mean, I think we have taken all this into consideration. And I agree, moving forward, there is no perfect scenario.
Well, just thank you for your time. I felt I needed to speak. I know I'm getting a lot of calls. I know we're all getting a lot of calls. And it's just, it is an untenable situation. There is no right answer. And I know you get the frustration. We're all trying to handle it the best we can. And I do. I thank you for your time. And I hope that some of the things that I've said will kind of hit home and that we do need to look a little bit closely at the people who are going back initially and what exactly those standards mean and how they're being implemented. So, thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Any comments are appreciated.
Can I just, because I know this went off topic a little bit, and we're going to be talking about reopening. So I just want to bring it back to air quality. But Deb brought up something that just, I wanted to ask Jeanne really quick. With regards to the air exchanges, we've heard it's just like the distancing. It's gone from six to four. You know, obviously, air quality is one part of a larger equation. Mass is a part of it, you know, keeping kids in pods. And, you know, it's all part of a larger strategy. Can you just briefly explain, you know, if you know, the rationale on the reduction of the air exchanges? And, you know, also like to the point of, you know, kids being in a room, maybe in higher density, how that would impact maybe a fluctuation? Because they're setting some hard rules here. Six exchanges was before. Four exchanges is now, I guess. And it's a moving target. Do you agree, disagree with that? Or is there any scientific premise?
There is a lot of scientific data out there. The recommendations that we were following were the recommendations that were put out by the Department of Education for the six to eight, I'm sorry, four to six air changes per hour. I don't know why it's been reduced to the four air changes. I'm not sure if that was, if that was done because they found that was an acceptable rate or if there were other reasons. I can't answer why that was a determination made by the state.
I mean, it's a, this goes into the social distancing. It seems like, you know, again, this is really a question, I guess, for the state. I was just asking you, as an expert in the air quality industry, you know, is there anything in your opinion that supports that decision as an expert?
With regard to the social distancing?
No, with regard to air quality, the exchanges.
Oh. If there's a good mixture of outdoor air included with the air changes, then four air changes is very reasonable. The less outdoor air you have, you would need more air changes mixed in with the outdoor air to make up that difference, to keep the air fresh.
to, to keep the air fresh and ventilated, to, to mitigate these CO2 buildup or in this case, the COVID particulate buildup in the space.
Okay. And that's fair. I mean, that's a, a little bit more complicated answer than the state wants to give us, but that's actually probably more accurate, right? Has more to do with outside exchange in ratio to the air exchanges actually happen, correct? So the outside air quantity, it's a, it's sort of a ratio. So I guess that's my point is it seems odd. I'm trying to stick to the air quality here because the reopening and social distancing and all that is, is part of the equation, but not your part of the equation. So, thank you for your input.
No problem. One last thing on that is that it, it also is taken into consideration the number of passes through the filtration. So where they, where they have mandated increased filtration to MERV 13, the number of air passes that you get through the filtration is also a factor of how much particulate is captured by the filters.
And, and will your calculations recommend capacities on the room based on the air exchanges? You said there wasn't a significant difference, but I mean, will there be, like in your report, so many air exchanges recommended max capacity of a room?
So I'm not coming up with the calculation specifically. I'm going by the guidance that the state has recommended. And then there's also guidance that is recommended by ASHRAI, which is the Association of Heating and Refrigeration Air Conditioning Engineering, New England Chips, which works with the EPA closely on schools and conditions within schools. And those, those recommendations and guidance are also what we're referring to when we write our reports.
Okay, so I'm assuming that's based on like a typical square foot calculation?
Cubic foot.
Cubic foot, I apologize. Yes. Okay. All right. That's it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ms. Murphy.
Okay, up next we have Brenda. Brenda, if you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Hi, Brenda Russell, Reed Schoolhouse Road. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I think this might be a question for Jean. Was the air, the air quality assessment seems to be positive. Was that based on full amount of students in the classroom, a half? Or is that, was that not part of the assessment?
No, it is part of the assessment. And what we're doing is doing calculations to, based on the number of air changes you have per hour with the MERV 13 filters and the amount of outdoor air in each space, making recommendations on the, the maximum student capacity. So in most of those spaces, your capacity was meeting, the ones that I've completed so far, the capacity was meeting the requirement to have full capacity in those spaces.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you Brenda.
Okay, up next is Anne Marie. Anne Marie, if you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your mic.
My name is Anne Marie Moore. I live at 25 Catalif Way Coventry. First, I'd like to thank the superintendent and the committee for making the expenditure to hire this person to give us all a sense of relief. I can't explain to you how much more I feel reaffirmed about sending my children to school, knowing that the school in the past has done what it takes to need to be done to fix the air filtration system. And I have every confidence in the school committee and the superintendent to continue to make improvements. And in speaking of that, I remember Gina mentioned on Wednesday that there's $50 million worth of money that can go to the schools and yet no one has asked for it or tried to utilize it at all. And I was wondering if that, if there's any prohibitive measure that's stopping us from trying to get access to that money? Because getting back in tune with what, I'm sorry, the kindergarten teacher had mentioned, Tyree, about future concerns, what are we doing to try to maybe find a plausible reason to get that money?
I, I can just answer that quickly. I will talk more about it in budget. So, but that's, you know, it's, it's not, you know, the governor was wrong. So we'll talk more about that in our agenda item. So we retract it as statement.
Oh, okay. All right. I just was wondering, but again, I know there's still concerns and people are always going to find reasons to be nervous and rightfully so, but I'm very happy that you guys got a positive response from the engineer and everything. And I think she's been very comprehensive and are making a lot of parents and hopefully even more teachers more confident. And I myself would like to go volunteer at the school for substitute teaching because I've been certified. I just want to put my money where my mouth is. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Anne Marie.
Okay, up next is Carrie. Carrie, if you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Hi, this is Tom Landry, 21 Circlewood Drive. This is a question for Jean. My question is, I'm assuming that a lot of these numbers that you're getting for the fresh air ventilation per room would be specifically from the drawings that you've seen. Is that right?
That's correct. And the other portion of that is based on the calculation of the percentage of outdoor air that can normally be achieved through a specific piece of equipment. Right now, the equipment is running at 100% outside air in economizer mode.
And so these plans and these, these buildings being the ages that they are, is there going to be a balancing contractor brought in to confirm all the values that are there?
That was one of the references that Craig made, that yes, that's, that's part of the recommendation by the state and it was part of the state's checklist as well. So having a balancing contractor do recommissioning or rebalancing is not something that's typically done, but it is something that is recommended in this situation because it's, things fall out of calibration. So verifying that things are set the way they need to be is, is always a, a good bet. But right now they're at 100% open, the dampers.
Yeah. So the balancing contractor will be balancing that fresh air once everything is brought back to the typical operation during winter? Or would it be when it's 100% outside air?
No, they would be balancing it for the, for the minimum air position that can be achieved through any specific piece of equipment. So that the different classroom ventilators or air handling units, rooftop units, all of the different pieces of equipment have different capacity, capacities that can be allowed through them without either freezing a coil or tripping a freeze gas or causing the outdoor air temperature, the supply air temperature to drop too low.
Okay. And so the calculations you're doing for the fresh air requirements are with a fully loaded classroom, I would assume.
Correct. Based on, my calculations though are based on partial, are based on the minimum requirement that appears to be able to be achieved. It's not based on 100% outside air.
Okay. Now seeing some of these systems, I know they're all very, very different. So it's kind of a hard question to answer, but in your opinion, would the majority of the systems out there be able to achieve the minimum fresh air requirements with a fully occupied space at a minimum position in the winter time?
So far, the ones that I've looked at do, do appear to. We have a lot of calculations to do because you have a lot of spaces. We just finished walking the buildings at the end of last week. So there are a lot of spaces that the calculations are still in process. But the ones that have been looked at do look good so far.
Good. I, I appreciate your time and good luck. It's, I don't envy you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Any more hands, Mr. Murphy? Oh, I just need one more.
Okay, Colby, again, if you could unmute your microphone, state your name and address for the record. Colby?
What? What? Oh.
Colby, you're on.
Yeah, so, do you, I have a question about the middle school.
Okay.
Uh, is it all repaired yet?
Hey, Colby, this is Mr. Levis. How are you?
Hi, Mr. Levis.
Hi, nice, nice. Glad you came on and asked the question. So I think what, what we're talking about is looking at making sure that the space that people will come back to next week, those, I think there's eight spaces we're using next week are, are safe. And then there's going to be some ongoing work. We're going to look at to make sure that as we bring more people back, all those spaces are, are safe for individuals to return when we start bringing back a lot more students to the middle school. Okay?
Okay. And I heard, I heard you on the Dan York Show the other day.
Wow. I hope I made you proud, Colby.
Okay.
All right. You have a good night.
Okay, bye.
Bye, Colby.
Bye.
All right.
All right. It looks like we, we might be ready to move on, Mr. Murphy. What do you say?
I think that's, I think that's all.
Okay. So we've heard from the public, we've heard from the committee. Any last questions for Jeanie? I don't see any. I just want to thank you again. And thank you for answering all these really tough questions. Really glad that you're the expert here. So thank you again. So I guess we can move on to, is anybody else, no? I think we can move on to agenda item number six, which is the Coventry Public Schools reopening plan update. So, Mr. Levis, do you have?
No, I'm going to defer to Mr. Coward tonight. So he's, he's done, you know, working with so many individuals, our administrative team and teacher leaders, put so much work into this. And I just want to thank him. And we received a lot of feedback about the last plan from parents and, and community members. And I think they, they took a lot of that in consideration. So I, I just want to thank them. But, and thank you, Jeanie. You don't have to stay anymore if you want to go. So.
Bye.
So I'll, I'd ask Mr. Coward to take over if you don't mind.
That's great. Thanks.
Okay, I, before Mr. Murphy shares the, the PowerPoint that I put together, just to kind of give some background knowledge to the committee and to everybody listening. So we've, we've worked on this plan in draft form for the last, well, basically since the last school committee meeting. So it's been about the last week and a half. It's, it's changed a number of times. And, and that, and changes are based on, you know, information that we're getting from Department of Ed, information that we're getting from the community, information we're, we're sharing with each other, either as administrative team or with the teachers or the teachers' union. And we, we're trying to put together something that is comprehensive. I'll say off the top, I don't expect it's going to make everybody happy. I, I don't know if a plan exists that will make everybody happy. This is a very passionate topic and, 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 you know, struggling to make everybody happy is, is really kind of, you know, occupying a lot of space in my head. So right now, I, I created this document and I put it into a PowerPoint so it'd be easier to share. It has been shared with the administrative team, with the teachers and out to the community. So we took a different approach this time. We wanted to get it out early so that people had a chance to look at it and digest it. And then if they have questions, you know, they can bring those questions forward. So I'm going to go ahead with, with the presentation and then I'll take some questions at the end. Mr. Murphy, can you put that up, please? Okay, so this is just the opening page and, you know, this is our recommendation. You know, we're presenting to the school committee, we're, we're making a recommendation based on the information that I just talked about. Next page, please. All right. So. So I think one, one thing people lose sight of when we talk about our reentry plan is that we're working from a position of, of getting a directive from, from the governor. And the governor has stated her directive numerous times in many different ways, in different, you know, press conferences and different news media outlets and press and print. And she has said and stayed firm that on the reentry plans that she expects all elementary school students to be prioritized, be back in person every day in the full in-person model or, or in the partial in-person scenario. I'm not going to read every single slide because that will take a long time. But on the top of the slide, it does say that in her directive, that high schools and middle schools can be back in the hybrid model with the rotating schedules, having some days in school and some days on distance learning. The, the, the distinct difference here has to do with stable pods. At the elementary level, the kids are going to stay in their classrooms throughout the day and that classroom becomes a stable pod. The Department of Ed has identified a classroom pod being 30 people in the room, not 30 students, but 30 people. And I know some people have said that they thought stable pods were 15. That's what the governor talked about in terms of recreation in the community. But for the school department, it's 30. When you get to the middle school, they're going to do the same thing. They're going to try to maintain stable pods, but it's going to be more challenging because of their schedule and electives. And at the high school, it becomes almost impossible because every student has an independent schedule. Every student changes classes every 80 minutes. And every time they change class, they re, they reshuffle into a new classroom. And when you have, when you don't have stable pods at that level, when kids change from one room to the next, you have to wash down the rooms completely. And that is, it's a tax on the community in terms of us having the manpower to make those, clean the rooms, to have the supplies to clean, clean the rooms, to have the time to clean the rooms. So for us, at least in this initial presentation, we're going to return middle school and high school back in hybrid and we're going to work towards meeting the governor's directive of full in-person return. Go ahead, Jim. So what I, the way I laid this out is I, I put the proposal. And, and so what we did is we prioritized a full return for elementary students and we're bringing them back a few levels, a few grade levels at a time, over the course of a number of weeks until we have all the kids at elementary in school in person by October 5th. Sixth grade will also be returned to school in the hybrid model by October 5th as well. And how we justified this proposal, how we came up with this, this, this presentation or recommendation is one, which I just mentioned, the governor's full in-person requirement. Two, we did hear from many, many people in the community about their, their need to have their, their kids in school, their desire to have their kids in school, their belief that kids need to be in school. I know there's probably as many people who feel the other way. Those people have an option, they can select distance learning. For, for people looking for in-person, we need to try to come up with an option for those families. Jeanie just talked about air quality, so I'm not going to go too deep into that. But the initial results of the analysis identified that there were enough classrooms at the elementary level to bring back students in person. And the classrooms at Western and some of the other places where she has a question mark, we've actually moved classrooms around. We've emptied those rooms and moved them to rooms that would typically be classrooms for teachers who are providing distance learning. And this time will give us, and by bringing a few grade levels back in at a time, it gives us an opportunity to look at the different mitigation techniques and strategies we can do around air quality so that we can get the rest of the buildings in order so that when we go to the next phase and bring in the middle school and high school, we have more spaces available for them. For people in the restaurant business or in retail, the, the term soft opening is basically something that you use to try to gauge your capacity to do what you want to do, whether it's serve people food or sell to try to gauge your capacity to, uh, do what you want to do, whether it's serve people food or sell somebody a product. We're looking at this as almost like a soft opening, opening for the schools so that we can test out the protocols, the procedures, the strategies that we've put in place for the classrooms, for the schools, for the bus. Some people may be surprised by that, but almost every single school in the district has turned their, uh, day-to-day operations upside down. And almost everything looks different than it did before in terms of how we operate the schools because of all the different requirements. So having an opportunity to look at that in, in, uh, with smaller groups of kids allows us to kind of work out the kinks without having too many kids in the building all at one time and adults. And then, um, I did want to state this because this is important and I, and I don't want anyone to think that we are, um, not disclosing everything, that this, 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 this approach, um, does not allow for six feet of social distancing between, uh, students in the classroom. Um, as Mrs. Tyree said, you know, some of the classrooms are going to have 20, 21 kids. Our classrooms do not have enough room for 21 kids to be six feet away from each other. In most cases, it's about three feet. The back-to-school FAQ, which is linked in the presentation, which was also shared to the community, states that the, the full six, when this full six feet cannot be met, that we take a more of a layered approach of mitigation. And we look at things like stable pods, we look at masking, we look at cleaning, we look at ventilation, and we look at all of those things as a layering approach to make the rooms as safe as possible. But, um, full six feet will not be, um, possible in this, uh, proposal. Jim? Uh, I did put into the plan some definitions. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I did this purposefully because after the last meeting, there were a lot of questions from families and parents and community members, even some teachers who didn't, uh, know what all the terminology meant. So what I did is I, I went ahead and defined distance learning. I defined what it meant to be in hybrid. I defined what a special population is. Jim, go, can you go to the next page? I defined what Career and Tech was because often I refer to things as CTE. And a lot of people don't realize that's the, the, the regional career center up at the high school. And then I just talked about, uh, social distancing. And that I, and I'll read this one now. It just says that the guidance notes that six feet of physical distance should be maintained as much as possible. At this time, there is no minimum number of feet of physical distance that must be maintained. The six-foot guidance is to reduce the spread between individuals. When planning, if students slash adults are unable to meet six-foot distancing apart, the additional mitigation efforts should be used, i.e. face coverings, clean spacing, supplies, face coverings, uh, and not facing one another. And the spacing should be as close to six feet as possible. That came from the RIDE FAQ. Jim? So the phases. So, you know, when we first started talking about this, it was phase one, then it was phase one, two, three, and now it's, you know, five phases. But the reason why it's five phases is because we are, um, moving through the phases a little bit quicker. And so, uh, phase one, which starts on Monday, is the one that we talked about at the last school committee meeting. It's what we're going to open with. And that one is, um, you know, Mondays are going to be distance learning days for all kids, no matter what scenario we're in, or what phase we're in, uh, with the exception of holidays. Uh, our pre-K and K students will start school in full return, which is a Tuesday to Friday. Uh, special education students and other students in programs identified in the chart will be, uh, returned to programs in their schools. Career and tech programs for students in level three and four will be scheduled for in-person learning at the high school. And then all other kids in Coventry will be on distance learning. Phase two is September 20, the week of September 21st, which is the following week. Everything in phase one stays the same, does not change. What we do is we add in first grade and second grade students returning to full return. So we will have everybody in phase one in place and now we're layering in first and second grade students. Phase three, everything in phase one and two stays the same. And now we layer in third and fourth grade students for return. And phase four, everything stays the same in one, two, and three. We layer in fifth grade and then we bring in sixth grade to the middle school in hybrid. All the other kids will be on distance learning. And then by October 13th, which was the governor's deadline, uh, we have all the phases that were already in place, uh, not changing. And then we add to, uh, our, our population, all seventh to 12th grade students returning to school in the hybrid model, uh, Tuesday through Friday. Jim? And then I did is I, I, I took the exact same information I just read and I put it into a chart because I think sometimes a visual makes it easier for people to, uh, see what we're doing. So in the left-hand column is just everything that stays true, uh, in all phases. Mondays always distance learning days, pre-K and K students are going to be in school Tuesday to Friday, and the special populations I talked about. In phase one, like I said earlier, all those kids that I mentioned were in school and that everybody else is on distance learning, one to five. In phase two, we bring in grades one and two to full return. Three to five stays on distance learning. In phase three, we bring in grades three and four to full return. Grade five stays on distance learning. In phase four, we bring grade five in and then all pre-K to five kids at that point in elementary will be in full return. And then on October fifteenth, thirteenth is, uh, phase five. It stays the same as the previous week. Nothing changes. Jim? We go to middle school, uh, the same thing. The left-hand column stays true. It talks about it being distance learning for all students and it just talks about the different populations of kids that will be coming back, uh, for, for return. Sixth to eighth grader on distance learning in phase one, like I said. There are distance learning in phase, uh, two. There are distance learning in phase three. In phase four, which is October 5th, we bring in the sixth grade only for hybrid. And you see that it's broken down by alphabet. One of the things I neglected to say above is that there are occasions where a principal may reach out to a student or to a family to ask them to go to a different day than the day that's, uh, that coincides with the, uh, letter of the, um, last name. And this is sometimes so that we can, um, uh, work on either intervention support or other supports and available to the students on days that they may not be in school. Six, seven, and eighth grades stay on distance learning. And then in phase, in the new phase, in phase five, October 13th, everybody at the middle school is in full hybrid. Jim? And the high school, left-hand column stays the same. They are, um, on distance learning. You have the CLA and all the different programs coming back. And then, uh, the C, the CTE students, the career, the regional career students in level three and four are going to come back in person. I will say that this is how we've laid it out for CTE, for career and tech students. But Mrs. Ferguson and the high school team have been looking at ways to bring in the level one and level two students in sooner. They're looking at that at the building level and are looking at the different schedules. So we may be able to come back in another week or two or, or the next meeting and say, you know, good news, we can get the CT kids, CTE kids in levels one and two in earlier. If we can't, then we're going to stay with the schedule, uh, that we have here. And, uh, everyone stays on full distance until we get to phase five on October 13th, where the high school students, grade nine through 12, return to the hybrid model. And then at that point, on October 13th, every kid in Coventry has, uh, an in-school component to their, uh, learning. Our elementary kids under the governor's directive are in full return. Pre-K to five, in the middle school and high school kids are in hybrid, which is acceptable uh, based on the language that I shared with you above. Before I stop sharing, is there any questions about what I've discussed? And if I went too fast, I'll be happy to go back and explain something else.
Jim, you want to?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, was there a reason why you picked Monday as, uh, the distance learning day and not a day like Wednesday? Where you'd have that day in between to clean?
Yeah, so the reason why we chose Monday, this goes back to what the superintendent was saying earlier about us working with other districts. We were looking at different, um, configurations together. And we landed on Mondays being a distance learning day for a few reasons. Uh, one is there's a lot of Monday holidays. So those are days out of school right off the top. And then the governor and Department of Ed identified, uh, eight Mondays throughout the year as professional development days. So when you put those days that are out of school with, uh, the holidays, there were a number of Mondays that we'd be missing. And so it made sense to make that the distance learning day. But I will say that we've already had discussion about that Monday being a distance learning day. And if at some point down the line, we could revisit that and see if there's a way to, you know, look at that differently.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Coward. Um, I'm just going to go down the line. Mr. Florio, did you have any questions for Mr. Coward?
Hi, Don.
Hello.
Don, let me ask you a question. Do you, 21 kids seems to be a lot of kids at the elementary school level in a classroom, particularly a kindergarten grade. Is there a reason why there were so many kids?
So what happened is, um, we have, uh, a, a, a grade level out of school that has a number of students. So I'll just pick 100 because it's a nice round number. And we said to the community, you know, who wants distance learning? Because one of the things the governor said is people need to have options. So at, at the elementary level, we identified, uh, who the distance learning kids were. And the distance learning numbers were such that we assigned a teacher to, at a grade level to teach the distance learning, uh, students. So out of four teachers at Washington Oak at third grade, one of the third grade teachers may be a distance learning teacher. And the other three teachers are teaching the in-school component. So that one teacher is just responsible for the kids that are out of school. So when you, when you have, uh, one person assigned to the distance learning students, that takes the rest of the kids and you have to divide them by three classrooms. So most of the classrooms are right around 20. You know, some are just a little less, some are a little bit more. It, I'm not going to say that it's not a lot of kids. It is. Um, and, and, but the reason why it ended up that way is because we're trying to accommodate our students who have asked for distance learning with a full-time distance learning teacher assigned to them so that they can get the education that they need and assign the rest of the students that are in school to teachers so they, they can get the education they need. And we don't want to have any teachers responsible for an in-school component and an out-of-school component at the same time because it's very difficult to do both. It's almost impossible.
So, so Don, what do you, what are the numbers at the high school? How many kids per classroom in the high, at the high school and middle school?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, Dave, in terms of how many kids are in each class. I just know that, you know, uh, when you run a class that's full at the secondary level, you're really, you're right up against 25. You're, you know, it could be as many as 28. So the class is there a little bit, um, bigger. So, and classes are running full because, you know, because of issues we've had with budgetary, um, things over the last few years, we've been running lean, right? So if we can't fill a class, we just don't run the class.
Gotcha. And, and how about PPE equipment and masks? I, is that provided by the school department or the parents have to pick that up themselves?
So we've purchased masks for students and for staff. Uh, some of it's in-house and, and available. Some of it is still coming in every single day. As you can imagine, pretty much everybody in the country, uh, not just schools, uh, even businesses are looking for PPE. So we're trying to, um, compete with everybody else to get the, the materials. But students are going to have masks and, um, and staff are going to have masks available to them as well. And then, you know, for people who are nurses or people who are dealing with students in very close proximity, they may have PPE that's a little bit more, um, high-end, you know, like the, the N95 type mask versus cloth mask.
And the, the teacher's desk, is there going to be Plexiglas around the desk or in, in front of the teacher or?
So we bought Plexiglas shields for every student, every teacher in the district. And it's a, um, almost like a teller shield. It's a plastic shield where, and they actually can move it from one place to another. It's a flat shield that sits in front of them. And so they can, it could be at their desk, it could be at a, a table. They, they can move it wherever they want. At the elementary level, we also bought, uh, Plex, not, well, it's not really Plexiglas. It's more like a plastic shield. They're foldable, so they have a front and sides. And those are, have been purchased for the elementary students. They're due to ship, uh, uh, I think at the end of next week or the middle of next week. So we're crossing our fingers that we have them in on time. Um, if we don't, I mean, there's not much we can do about that. We're just going to have to work around that, whether it's using outside space or other space available to us. The good news about bringing only a few grade levels in at a time is that there's more space available. So when, when next week, when pre-K and K come in, uh, there's no other kids in the school other than some of the special populations classes. So we can spread out a little bit until those, uh, pieces come in.
Thank you, Don. Thanks for, thanks for answering my questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Florio.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Um, Mr. Murray?
Uh, all right, uh, so first, thank you for the work, Don. This reads much clearer as a parent and gives me a breakdown of at least who's going back and when, at least with the goals in mind, and provides some clear directive that's brief and easy on the eyes.
That was the goal.
So along these lines, you know, I've always been an advocate of a phased-in approach. And I, I've said that before. So I, I like that we're taking a soft-opening approach and approaching cautiously. With regards to PPE, you said some stuff is on order and we may have our fingers crossed. So that never gives a sense of, um, surety to people. I absolutely want to make sure, and our promise was to create as safe of an environment as possible when they return. So my question is, if we do not have appropriate PPE in the class, let's say when we roll in even phase two, are we flexible, are we going to try to be nimble and flexible to bump that and, and move?
Can I, can I jump in there, Don, just for a second?
I was going to ask you to, actually.
Oh, thank you. So, and we're going to talk more about this in the next days around budget. But I, I've been saying this, that, um, as we transition in, if we don't have funds right now, um, you know, part of the reason why our PP is coming later than others is, is funding. And, um, not only the PPE portion, Mr. Murray, but also staffing is going to be necessary. Um, custodians, supervisor assistants, in knowing that we have that ability to continue to provide PPE cleaning supplies in every, in any point, and we'll, again, that'll be the next agenda item. But this, this is all going to be paused. And that's where, um, you know, this plan in, in, you know, is, is, I think, is an incredible body of work. But funding will drive us going into phase, you know, three, phase four, definitely. Um, there's no way we're going to have students in every classroom, no matter what, whether it was hybrid or, or everybody back, without having additional staffing, without having the appropriate PPE. So, you know, that's why we have this, you know, as Don called a soft opening. But, um, you know, that definitely will be a deal breaker and the community needs to know that. You know, I mean, and I know there'll be a lot of conversation at our next agenda item about that. But funding is, is crucial.
And Mr. Murray, I, you know, I, um, I, I, I may have misspoke a little bit. We have the PPE to open. What is on delay are the, um, the, the, the plastic shields that we bought for students. Not the ones for teachers. The teacher ones are in, just the ones that we had bought for students. So that, that's what we're waiting on.
Okay, no, and I understand that. And listen, I know you're doing the best you can. I know funding is an issue. I know availability of protective devices as a whole is a problem, right? We're competing with everybody else. Everyone's coming back at the same time. I guess from my standpoint, I just want to make sure, you know, if we're saying that that is part of our protection plan, just like hand sanitizer, masks, dividers, anything that goes in that classroom, you know, my position would be that until all that is in place, we not execute the plan. So, you know, and I, I think what I'm hearing is that's, that's somewhat the case and we are going to remain flexible. I, I just hate to see that October 13th drive us over the edge if, if we're even just expecting delay from China because we can't get certain equipment. Um, and that may not be masks, it may be other things. Because as I said before, a lot of this closer, you know, um, other measures to get us, you know, lower than that six feet is part of a comprehensive strategy, right? You keep kids in pods, masks, sanitizer, cleaning, shields, protection barriers. It's all part of the encapsulation of the plan. And if one piece of the plan is not in place, then we're not, we're not providing that level of safety, right? If we could go to six feet, maybe we could avoid some of that. But it sounds as though we're not going to. We're going to be at 20-plus kids in many of our classrooms, which is almost a full learning, learning environment. So that's more of a statement. I know you can't answer that. I think my overriding is that I think my overriding is that, obviously, we want to create the environment as a whole as safe as possible. And I'm not, you know, certainly not going to oppose if we get to a certain phase and you say, "We can't do it, we need to delay another week." To me, that would be a responsible way to, to go. On the flip side of that, we've had, I have had overwhelming response from parents wanting their kids back in school. So saying less than six feet is while difficult, ultimately, parents have that option. So if they don't feel comfortable with the spacing, the parents have a right to go to an alternative option. When it comes to the teachers in front of the classroom, I expect it will provide every measure possible to protect them in the situation that we're in. But I'd say, to your point earlier, I believe, we're in a situation that's much like many school districts throughout the state, less than ideal. We're not living in an ideal time. Transportation wasn't mentioned, and I know that's maybe not part of this specific plan.
I actually, I actually did want to, I wanted to speak about that. I kind of, I glazed, I skipped over it in error and I did want to mention that. So it is a concern. Transportation is a concern. Half-capacity of the buses is where we're at now. That could change. It changed before, it could change again, but right now it's half-capacity. We're, we're definitely fine for next week. Because when we bring it back pre-K and K, and most pre-K kids are transported themselves. So, you know, we're just transporting mostly kindergarten students and special populations. Even the following week, when we bring in 2nd and 3rd grade, you know, based on the numbers that the elementary teachers have been looking at, excuse me, the elementary principals have been looking at and working with Jason, they feel comfortable with that. Where it could get a little bit tight and where we do have to watch it closely is when we do the next phase, when we're looking at 3rd and 4th, and then eventually 5th. Because we, we have a handle on it to a certain extent. We know that 1,330 people are doing distance learning, so they're not taking the bus. We know the population of people who have selected homeschooling, they're not taking the bus. We know the population of people who told us they're gonna opt out of transportation and transport their own kids, so we could take care of that. Where we, what we don't know are the people who did not respond to that survey because either they didn't get it, or they didn't want to answer the question because they didn't feel like they had enough information, or they felt that they wanted to save a spot on the bus. And they may have no intentions of ever using the bus, but they didn't answer the survey. So how it looks in actuality when kids come in is a little bit, we're thinking it may look different than what we have on paper. We hope it doesn't, but it could, and we want to be practical about it. So bringing in a few grade levels at a time does us a lot, does allow us to analyze it one week at a time to see where it's going and to be able to make adjustments if we have to make adjustments. But that's a very, very challenging scenario. Of all the things we're looking at, you know, the six feet is bothersome. How we're gonna feed people is bothersome. How we're going to keep everybody safe is, you know, priority number one. But the, the thing that occupies most of us at night is, is transportation, because it's, there's a little bit of an unknown there.
No, that's, I mean, I know you're dealing with a lot. Half-capacity is, is not a lot of capacity given the size of the bus. And I guess, you know, I don't want to get too in the weeds on this because I know you're working the issue and the problem. But I'm hearing it is a problem, so.
It's a concern, for sure.
Yeah, I guess a concern, a challenge, we'll call it. I think the soft-opening approach, to your point, may reveal some results on how many parents are opting, actually opting to get on that bus. I guess another concern would be that as comfortability become, as parents become more comfortability, comfortable with the situation, they may decide to do the return. And so obviously, that's gonna put more stress on the system.
It does. There, like I said, there's no quick and easy solution to anything. There's no right answer, there's no right plan. It's doing what you can do with the best information you have at the moment. And when new information comes, being able to adjust. That's, that's the best we can do right now.
Okay. Thanks, Don. I know you got a heavy lift. Thanks for the work on this and for the clarity of the plan.
And I'm just the presenter. This is a lot of people's time and energy. I'm just the person speaking.
Understood. Thanks for their efforts as well.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mrs. Colonian?
Oh, thank you, John. I, I thought it was very, I, I liked the layout. It was very easy to read and I appreciate the work. I, I just had that one question. You answered about the bomb. I wanted to find out about whether or not the kids are going to have the petitions, but you already said that they, that you ordered them. What about now teachers and assistants? Is it, are they going to have something suspended from the ceiling? Or is it just gonna be on a desk?
You know, Ms. Manjri can chime in, but I, I think it's a tabletop.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, so the, the dividers were ordered within understanding that there would be circumstances where a teacher needed to do one-on-one or pull a student up to the desk and they would be in close proximity. So that divider was to be put on the desk when they, when they have to be in that close proximity, whether it's reviewing a paper or, you know, doing some reading support or whatever requires that more intimate interaction. That's why we purchased that divider for the, for the teacher's desk.
Thank you. That's all I know. Thank you again. Yeah, that's, you did a really nice job with that.
Thank you, Mrs. Colonian. And finally, Mr. Pearson.
I apologize if I, if you said this already and I missed it. One of our previous meetings may have been the last meeting. I believe the, we're keeping a tally of the, the number of parents that are opting for distance learning, you know, no matter what. And I believe that was at about 25% last we met. Do we have a percentage now that opening plans are starting to shake out more? Where are we with parents who are, the percentage of parents who are opting for distance learning only?
Yeah, I know it's 1,330 people. I'd have to do the quick calculation. I think between the people who asked for distance learning and the homeschool requests, we're almost at 30%. I could do some quick math here, just to kind of look at it.
Sounds about right.
Yep. Yeah, 30% would be 1,400, so we're, we're probably just under that.
So we picked up another, another 5% since the last meeting.
Between 4 and 5.
Okay. Thank you for putting this together. This was actually very helpful today. I had a couple of questions about the reopening plans and trying to understand it. And I actually was able to point parents toward the new tables you, you built and with the different phases. And that really helped answer some questions and for them and also for me. So thank you for putting it together in that format. I think it's very helpful. And that's all I have.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. And I, I will just reiterate that I think that the, the way this was set up for parents and for all of us actually, the community in general, students and staff, is, is really readable and easily understood. And obviously, it's, it's a wonderful thing to look, to see that, you know, there's a possibility that all of this could happen, as long as everyone realizes that it all hinges on our budget, our ability to do this. But the fact that our buildings can do it, there's a plan, and it's a weekly gear up, it was wonderful to see that today. And I'm sure a lot of parents were glad to see it in this kind of format that's very easily understood. So I thank you very much for that.
At least they can plan. You know, I'm a parent and I know that the parents I spoke to since last school committee meeting just wanted to have some dates, some idea of what the phases look like so they could plan. Some of them may not be thrilled with what we've put forth here, but at least they have some information so they can plan for it. So that, that was the whole goal. We wanted to make it parent-friendly and give them what they needed so they can plan for whatever they need to do for childcare.
Well, I, I think it was an excellent plan and, and I thank you and all the people that worked on it with you. So again, thank you so much. And I guess we have all had our say, so I guess we can bring it out to the public. It looks like there are some hands up, Mr. Murphy?
Yes. Ian, your first, just your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Ian Smith, 10 Remington Farm Drive. Before I get started, my first question is, is this being voted on tonight? Because that's not in the agenda. It's just discussion.
I, I didn't think we had a plan, we needed to vote on this. I think it's, I don't know, Mr. Levis, do we need to vote on this?
I mean, again, we, you know, the, the committee, our agenda says, on the bottom of our agenda says the committee can vote on any item on this agenda. So we put that on there specifically for these type of scenarios. So if the school committee chooses to do so, you can vote on, on this tonight.
Okay. I'm just curious, based on when the release and the timing of this meeting, I was just curious. I just had some concerns with elementary specifically. I'm confused as to why elementary has nothing happening in Phase 5. That seems like we're completely neglecting a week of time where data and analysis could impact the decision of bringing kids back. You know, earlier, Mr. Levis said that limited return allows us to address issues. If, if you choose Week 1, you don't have time to address them Week 2 when more kids are coming in. Furthermore, as Mr. Howard, E+ I think is extremely problematic, especially at lunchtime when no one in the room will be wearing masks and sharing snacks and basically all the precautions go out the window for 25 minutes of lunch. At 25 kids, 20-plus kids, that's a whole nother issue versus 15 kids or less if there was a hybrid model at the elementary level. Going back to lunch, lunch fronts would be shut down under this lunch plan for elementary schools, like it would be illegal. And I'm just confused about the five phases as well. On September 1st, you released that Phase 2 would start 9:28, Phase 3 would start 10:13. Now we got five phases. And I guess, a lot of my question in all of this is classrooms, my understanding is are preset across the district for a hybrid at elementary level? How are they getting back to full capacity in a week or less? In some instances, if we go back with a full elementary return?
So I can say a few things. So we wouldn't be at full capacity in a week's time because we're adding a few grade levels at a time. So we wouldn't have everyone back in the building until October 5th. The reason, the reason why we spread it out a little bit was actually at the request of the principals. They, they thought it would be easier to monitor two grade levels worth of kids, new kids, a week versus bringing three grade levels in at one time and then another three grade levels in at one time because it's more, it's more kids, it's more volume. So they thought it would be easier to kind of graduate it slowly. The reason why we tried to get everybody in prior to the 13th, we actually did that purposefully. And it goes back to Mr. Murray's question about transportation. We are looking at transportation primarily right now at the elementary level. But we know eventually when we go hybrid, we're also gonna have to be transporting the middle school and the high school kids. And so if we're looking at transportation on a weekly basis, if we get to a point where we have to make some adjustments, we thought having a buffer week between when we had all the elementary kids in, between that and when we bring back the secondary kids would give us some time to make some adjustments. So that was actually done purposefully.
Right. And then, I mean, lunch is a major problem. I have a first baby returning, she's going back a week earlier than I thought. That's a week more of exposure than I thought. It's, you, you, your fingers are crossed that there are partitions in that might alleviate some spread. And it sounds like if they're shipping at the end of next week, they definitely won't be in for my daughter's first lunch. And, and one thing that is, is frustrating to me is the continued statistic that 30% are opting out and that everyone has a choice. Not everyone has a choice if they have to go back to work. So the 70, that doesn't, 30% opting out are the people that can do it. That doesn't mean 70% of people want their kids back. It means 70% of people have to send their kids back or some combination of have to and want to. And just that 30%, I think, while that's the truth of people opting out, I really want you to consider what the 70% is. It's people that have to send their kids back for childcare services. And, and, and this lunch plan is horrific, as is the transportation plan, where a hybrid model, would, would that help your busing situation by cutting it in half?
Of course, it'd be fewer kids.
I, I just, so the answer to the air quality is hybrid makes better air quality. The answer to the busing is hybrid makes better busing. I don't understand why there isn't a hybrid option available at the elementary level right now, when it solves multiple problems and every classroom is set up for that and every teacher can manage that in a far better fashion. Sounds like the governor's directive for elementary is guiding this and not safety.
Yep. I mean, ultimately, the governor has laid out what the, the plan needs to be. And we are expected to do what we can to respond to that. And we submitted a plan, we got pushed back on that plan. We had to submit another plan. Then we had a meeting with the governor and a deputy, a deputy commissioner. And we were told that if we brought in pre-K and K first and then had a phase in with elementary working to full return by that October 13th date, that we would be approved to move forward. So that's, that's, we're working towards what we've been given from the governor as the, the goal. And, and, you know, I, I'm sure there's lots of people out there that are happy we're starting the 21st because they have the same childcare issues and they want to have their kids in school a week earlier. There may be people out there in your position that wish it was a week back. I, like I said earlier, and it's no disrespect to anybody listening, it's, it's, it's such a challenging situation and it's almost impossible to create a plan that's gonna make us satisfy every single person's needs. And I apologize for that because I wish I could. If you knew me personally, I like to make people happy and this is a challenging thing for me.
I appreciate that. And I appreciate how difficult this is. I just, I've heard at every single one of these meetings and all the hours that you put in, I've been listening. Safety's gonna drive this. And there's two things on the table right now where safety can drive this and governor's directives winning. And I just want to empower you and, and remind you Warwick is, chose to handle things safely for their students. And also, I can tell you that just the other school districts that I'm aware of, Cranston has their elementary back in a hybrid through October 13th with no in-person. So I don't know that that directive needs to be followed as closely as it may seem. So thank you for your time and your answers. I know this is impossible, but it seems like there might be some safer solutions than what's on that chart.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I just want, I would like to encourage all of our attendees that do want to speak that we do have a three-minute limit per our policy guidelines for public comment. I haven't really been strict about this, but if you could try your best to make your comments and questions as succinct as possible, it would really be appreciated. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. It's written on our agenda. And so hopefully, we can get through everybody's questions and comments without too much longer comment, so to speak. At, at any rate, Mr. Murphy, who's next on our list?
Emily, you're next. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Emily Muzzi, 288 Pulaski Street.
Don, could you just tell me why I'm bringing back the, the reasoning behind bringing back the sixth grade on the fifth, but not the ninth grade as well? If they're both transition years to get used to the building. I was wondering why maybe the ninth graders aren't going back until the 13th when all the seven through 12 are going back.
Yeah, it's a great question. And it's not, Emily, it's not completely off the table, to be honest with you. When we talked to the high school about, we, we, let me back up for a second. When we presented this plan, we talked to all the administrators and we spoke to the middle school and, and high school at the same time. And when we talked about sixth grade, you, your, your high school administrative team, their ears perked up because they want to get their kids in as well. And we went back and forth between ninth grade and then 12th grade because it's their senior year and trying to find a way to do it with the schedules. What's tricky a little bit about the high school is some classes have mixed grade levels in them. And when you have mixed grade levels in them, it gets challenging for a teacher to be teaching some kids in school and then some kids out of school. So, and I don't, I know, you could talk to your administrative team about how often that happens, but you know, the example that was given is you could have kids in two different grade levels in one class. Three, you know, half of them are in front of you and half of them are home because they're not in that grade level. And you would be expected to provide instruction to both of them and that would be challenging. But I don't know if that's the end of the conversation. When I talked to Mrs. May Cumber today, I said to her, I had to move forward with this plan and I wanted to put it together and get it out to the community. So I left ninth off, but I think we're going to revisit that conversation. If we can get them in earlier, then we're going to.
Thank you. I just think it'd be good if they could have a chance to get acclimated to the building since it's new to them. And but I understand, I didn't realize many of them had classes with shared grade levels. So that makes sense.
And Emily, I'm not sure if many of them do or not. It, it was just a concern that was brought up. And we were, we're going to revisit it, I promise you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Just one other thing. Is it possible to resend the transportation survey? Because maybe now a lot of parents would have a different thing to put on it than they had at the time it was first sent out.
Yeah, it's funny you should say that because I talked to Mr. Martin today and we, we were talking about some of our transportation concerns and we talked about communicating to parents again and to see if more parents at this time would be interested in transporting themselves versus taking advantage of the school department transportation. And it might help us get a better handle on what those numbers are on. So we actually talked about that today. I didn't want to move forward on it until I was sure that what we brought forward tonight was, you know, the actual plan.
All right. So it might come out, you might send it out again?
I, I'd like to send something, it may not be the same one. It may be something a little bit different because now I have more information about what the phases look like. But we'll probably be doing something shortly.
Awesome. Thank you all for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Emily.
Madam Chair, may I just bring up something while we're bringing in new people? I just want to address, I know people are in the comments and the chat and the Q and A get frustrated that they're not being answered. But I just wanted to put out there that we're not actively monitoring this. We're in a meeting. I know the staff does the best they can, including Don, to answer these questions. But, you know, if, if I will ask that, you know, and I'll ask the superintendent and Don, if, if we could get this list, which I know is printed out actually when we record these meetings, to maybe do an FAQ and respond to some of these. But we may not be able to get to all them now. So if you're frustrated, I get it. But, you know, understand that we are trying to listen and deal with a lot of things. So, you know, certainly ask your question, but if it's not responded to right away, just understand that, you know, if you really have a burning question, ask in the public session. So, sorry, Madam Chair, I just wanted to address that.
No, I think we said the same thing last meeting. It's very difficult to try to listen to everyone on our, our particular, the panelists, and then still see all this chat and questions and Q and As being asked. So again, it makes sense that we're not trying to ignore the attendees. It's just that we can't do more than one thing at a time. So thank you for that, that comment, Mr. Murray. Mr. Murphy, who's next?
Up next is Jen. Jen, if you could just state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Um, yes, my name is Jennifer Marzalak, 7 Tamarack Trail. First of all, I just wanted to start out by saying thank you for all the work that's been done over the past week. This is a very positive thing to see all these slides and planning and dates going into place. And I'm sure many parents like myself are, are very encouraged by this and it's a step in the right direction. It's, it's a step, which is good. And that's what we need at this point is small steps to get to the goal. That being said, I, I am a big fan of the phased-in plan. I think phasing the kids into the school through the buses and all of these different phases will be the best way to go. I, I just had a couple of questions tonight regarding this one issue. On October 13th, which is the projected date to start seven through 12 in a hybrid model, why is there no predicted date beyond that to get these grades into a full learning for a Tuesday through Friday scenario? I know busing might be an issue in the middle school years, but certainly in the high school with most of our juniors and seniors driving. I, I, I don't seem to think that would be as big of an issue at that level. And the very encouraging comments by the company, the engineering company that, I'm sorry, I forgot her first name, that spoke earlier this evening, kind of made it seem like our high school, I, I didn't hear too, too much about the middle school, but our high school was pretty, pretty good to go, which, you know, wasn't surprised to me as I'm sure multiple other people in this, in the community. But it was very encouraging to hear those comments. So I think a lot of parents are, are just looking for that. I mean, not a finite date, but hey, you know, we're going to put them in as a hybrid and then come November 4th, which I believe is the day after election day. You know, we could be looking at bringing back these grades to a full Tuesday through Friday scenario. And, you know, just, just trying this. Is there any, has there any, been any talk about this so far?
Yeah, today, yesterday, the day before yesterday, we talk about it every single day. Because we want them in school. And Jen, I don't, I don't live in Coventry, I live in Cranston, but my daughter's a senior and I have a daughter who's a sophomore. And they're in hybrid. And actually, they're starting at distance and then they're going to go hybrid. But I guess, I guess I have the same sentiment as you. I want my kids to have a great high school experience. And I know them being at home or them being in hybrid is not going to be the same as what their older sister or what even what they experienced in prior years. So we do want to get them all back full. I didn't, I, you know, personally, I'll just say from my own perspective, when we were building this out, you know, it seemed like such a, 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 such a complicated puzzle just to get to the 13th that I almost didn't want to put any more dates on paper because I, I didn't want to overextend myself, to be completely honest. But we have had the conversation numerous times, the superintendent and I talked about it today. I just need to make sure that we have, we all need to, it's not Don Coward, it's everybody. We need to figure out every single piece of the puzzle and how it fits together before we bring, you know, those 1,600 kids in all at once. Because it's a priority, but we want to make sure we do it the right way. Because once they're in, they're in. And, and it's, it's, there's no second bite at that apple.
Okay, understood. Um, the other question I had is I know it had, was mentioned that the not plexiglass, but the plastic in some form, the, the shields for the desks, not the teachers for the elementary schools may not possibly be in by the start of the first and second grade or the third and fourth grade phasing in. And that could possibly set us back a week or so. If those particular materials are not being used at the secondary levels for the middle school and the high school because they're going hybrid, would that set those phases back as well? Or would we move forward with those phases, given that they don't need those particular materials?
I, you know, I don't, I don't think that should impact the middle school and high school. To be honest, I, I have to think that through a little bit more. I don't want to answer too quickly. We ordered them for elementary because there's a lot of close proximity and knowing that we were bringing them back full first, we wanted to get them something in place. In full disclosure, we ordered the student desk shields or desk partitions way, way more, way more in advance than the teacher ones. Almost like three weeks before the teacher ones and the teacher ones delivered this week. And so, you know, we're kind of at the, the whim of, of manufacturing and shipping. I don't know if Ms. Mangerelli has a date in front of her. I want to say they said the ship date was either 16th or 17th. I don't want to mis, misstate it.
Right. So originally we were told it wouldn't ship until the 17th, but yesterday I had followed up with the company, asked for a partial shipment. They're coming from Ohio. Unfortunately, but I received that we would be able to get a partial shipment that went out today. And then a partial shipment, the balance of the shipment is supposed to go out Friday. So it's definitely cutting it close, but I'm hoping we'll at least get the, the shields for the next week that need to be in, in.
Promising. Very good. Um, I, I, I just had one more thing because I, I just have a couple of friends with me this evening. So we're trying to cut down on the, the questions and the, the burdens of timeframes here. A lot of the parents with, in the high school with the varying grades of students, 10, 11, 12 on the calendar, and I know it's a very tentative calendar sent out by Mrs. May Cumber. We are seeing that October 14th, PSAT either 10, 11, I don't know if it's just 11 or 10 is included, and the SAT for 12. Is there some kind of plan in place that being it's only the second day back for those students, what populations are going to be in to take that test? Or is that something that us parents will be notified maybe a couple of weeks prior that that would be canceled? So we can go ahead and try to schedule, because every other test we try to schedule on our own, like my son's taking an ACT this weekend in Westerly. You know, we're paying out of pocket for all these times, which I mean, in, in these times, so be it, we do what we have to do for our kids. But just trying to plan ahead, seeing if we need to either book another test for our students, or do we think this is a possibility for our school?
My understanding, and I would, I would encourage you to reach out to Mrs. Bowden or Mrs. May Cumber. But my, my, my understanding is if it gets canceled, it gets canceled by College Board, not by us. So our start date really shouldn't impact the, the, the test date. That's my understanding. But I would reach out to them because that is definitely something they are, they have a firmer handle on than I do. I know my own daughter is scheduled to take it in September and then again in October. And we were having, as, as, as a household, we're having a conversation because we're not even sure we'll get the September results back in time to even go through them before she would actually be taking the test again. So, you know, we're struggling with the same kind of things at the Coward household.
Right. Okay. Well, again, thank you. Thank you for all your efforts and all your hard work this week. This is very, very encouraging to see all these dates and things coming to fruition tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay, up next we have, it's just a number, 507-868. You could state your name and address to the record and unmute your microphone?
What, what was that number?
So you're 507-868?
Oh boy, I don't. Okay, maybe that's me. I'll go ahead and ask.
Okay, yep. If you could just state your name and address for the record and.
Laura Turner, I live on 48 Woodman Circle. I think you guys are doing a great job with all the plans that you've put together. I wish the high school kids could be back a little bit more than the distance learning and just hybrid. But I understand you have to follow with what you think is safe. I just want to make sure that, I work in the hospital and I work in pediatrics. And I just want to make sure parents are getting accurate statistics on what is actually happening with COVID-19 in children. And I know everybody is super nervous about everything. It is minimal. A very minimal percentage of children that are actually becoming symptomatic from COVID-19. And from what we're seeing in the hospital, and we do see many, many children that are immunocompromised and that are in big communities with other children and they're playing together in big groups without masks, which I know is completely unsafe, but we are seeing that. And they're still coming up asymptomatic. And the only positives that we have been getting have been children who either have to get admitted to the hospital for any reason and are tested prior to getting surgeries and that kind of stuff, who are, could potentially have been exposed, maybe positive, but are asymptomatic. So I just want to make it, and I'm not, I'm not speaking for every single case that's out there, but I do feel like we do need to put more statistics together just so parents can either feel a little safer or just be, make a more informed decision about whether they want their children to return or not. I, I definitely think safety protocols are super important. We're using them at the hospital. We are exposed to multiple people every single day. And we are only wearing masks. We don't wear any shields unless we, you know, there's someone who, someone who has a high fever or is coughing with a fever. Things that children wouldn't be in school for. So I, I just know everybody is really, really scared and I don't blame them. This is a super scary thing. But I do feel like someone, whether we get in touch with the health department or something that can get a little more statistics together just to make parents feel a little more comfortable about the decision that they're making.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It's a good suggestion. I will say that, you know, the other concern we have is the, for the staff and for their.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We know that, you know, the statistics are low on kids, but we also want to make sure we keep our faculty and staffs.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, masks with shields or the plexiglass is super important for the adults, for sure.
Thank you.
And that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, up next is Lori. Lori, if you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your mic.
My name is Lori LaPerch and I live on Hope Furnace Road. I like the updated plan. I love the blocks. That's pretty awesome, being able to follow that. I, I have to tell you that I drive for our town, so I transport our children. And I got my list today. And on one of them, I have 75 students. So looking at, writing my notes over here, that we can only fit 36 students to a bus, I know is concerning to all of us. And the woman who asked about the opting in, is there another, is there another survey that can be done? I think that's a wonderful idea. But we have to stop somewhere because we are going crazy trying to fit all of these students on a bus when we can only fit 36. I have two kids in our school system and I honestly don't know, one of them is in Vo-Tec and I don't know what day he is supposed to go. I don't know if he has transportation. I don't know what time he starts. So my question for, that's number one. Two, for the CTE is how do I know what day, I mean, what time? He goes to school because I have an 8:30 AM start time. And I don't know if that's accurate because my bus schedule shows that he gets picked up at 6:30 in the morning.
So I, I, yeah, so it's, it's a good question, but not, definitely not one for me to answer. I think the best thing you could do is call Lori Ferguson at the high school and, or Donna Bowden, but I think, or Brooke May Cumber. But Lori Ferguson is been working on those schedules and she has a firm handle on who's coming in when. So I, I would definitely reach out to them directly. And if you can't reach them, email me or call me at the office and then I will help get, get you in contact with them.
Okay, one more question. Is there, we're supposed to start driving on Tuesday. And we're supposed to transport these Vo-Tec kids. My son goes on Tuesday. I don't know who's picking them up. I don't know what time he's getting picked up. Do we have a list that, that's been sent to, to us?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I was just going to jump in, Don. So we're, you know, as you can see, there's a lot of moving parts here and, you know, we try to be as flexible. Some districts haven't been flexible. Some districts made the cutoff a long time ago. We felt that, you know, people need to be informed as much as possible. And again, we can't please everybody, but you know, the bus company, which you work for, but you guys have, you have management. They're working. I think I said, I sent a message out today that, you know, over the weekend, people will be notified. We have small numbers right now. So people are going to be notified, but that'll, you know, the bus company has the, the, the information. There may be some changes that are being made. So, you know, that, that'll be communicated to you.
When did that list go out?
I, I, you know what, I, I can't tell you when the list went out. But it's, you know, we've been working with the, you know, with Tony and Mandy, so.
Okay, I just, there's 42 drivers that need, that I guess are, I know Mandy's been working her tail off for all of us and it's wonderful. You guys have been working this hard too. Not saying nobody's not working hard, everybody is. Not saying nobody's not working hard. Everybody is. Um, we just want to make sure that we get all of the entire community who's listening to me speak. We want to make sure that we get all of our children to where they need to go, when they need to get there. And, and there's going to be a lot of hiccups. We all understand that. We just want to make less of them.
Yep. No, I, I agree. And I think we have a great working relationship, but we had a meeting the other day and, you know, we appreciate everything that you guys do. So, but, um, you know, we're pulling this together fast. I mean, this is, you know, I don't want to say, but I think this is the way things are going to be for a long time. A lot of flexibility. People are going to need to, to be flexible and, and patient and it's hard when you're, uh, when you're stressed. So, uh, but we are working hard with, with your company to make sure that everybody is, uh, taken care of.
Well, we're ready to rock and roll. We just want to make sure that we have the information we need because there's only so much we can do with limited information. So we just want to, uh, from, I'm just speaking as a parent myself. The, the bus, I wanted to let you know that I do drive. I do transport our community's kids. Um, and, uh, I just, Dawn, thank you for giving me Lori's name because I will contact her because that's truly one of the question I'm asking about. Um, and the, the survey, I, I'm going to speak just as a bus driver now that it would be nice to have a stop time. Because if it keeps changing.
Yep.
It's just hard. It's just really hard and everybody gets frustrated because the answers always change.
Yep. I, we're experiencing the same thing, Lori, with distance learning. Because every time we, every time we survey parents on distance learning, we get new results. When the results come in, it changes the class list. It changes the teacher assignments. At some point you have to stop or you, you'll never get to the point where you can plan for execution.
Yep, absolutely.
Thanks, Lori.
Thank you, guys.
All right, up next is Karen. If you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Hi, Karen Delone, 20 Regalwood Drive. Um, I want to first thank, uh, both Emily and Jen for asking two of the questions I had about getting a, an anticipated tentative date of full return for high school. And also the question of getting our freshmen important transition year in sooner. Um, and Dawn, I want to thank you for, for keeping that on the table and, and following through and addressing that again, um, as hopefully a, a, a strong possibility.
So I thought, um, you know, while listening and waiting was I, I do have somebody close to me that teaches outside of, you know, in another state who has a classroom. She is actually doing elementary school. She has a classroom of 10 students in and seven students distance learning that she is teaching simultaneously. And they are doing that through, uh, some type of Bluetooth camera as well as their Chromebook in a Google Meet type classroom. So, you know, maybe, I'm sure, maybe it's even been thought of, but you know, if, through technology and the teacher using the Chromebook, um, putting a Google Meet up for that class period, since the high school does have a scheduled half hour distance learning, you know, everybody log on at a certain time for your class, that, you know, they could, they could essentially teach at the same time and let, you know, peer to peer be part of that distance learning. Kids inside while the kids who did opt for distance learning all year be part of that same experience.
Karen, uh, we, we talked about that, um, in detail as far back as, um, two months ago, really. And, and a few things came up that, and I'm not trying to be negative, Nellie, here, so don't, don't paint me that way. But I just want you to know the kind of the things that we considered when we looked at it. Uh, number one is we, we, we have some challenges, challenges with bandwidth. And when you get, at, at least at our schools, when we get too many people on the internet doing Zoom type meetings, using large amounts of bandwidth, the quality drops down significantly. So that was, that was one concern that, you know, it, it's tough to be home. It's even worse to be home and have a lousy connection to what's going on in class. The second thing we were concerned about is the confidentiality of students because we wanted to make sure that we protected the identity of different students, especially if we had a student that had some sort of crisis or some sort of situation that we didn't then, um, expose that person to the community or anybody who happened to be watching a Zoom meeting. And then the third thing, we actually had spoken to some teachers about, you know, their, their teaching style and how they work with kids and realizing quickly that, you know, most of our teachers are moving around the room or they're, they're in locations, not always in the same exact spot. You know, they're not going to be up and down rows like they used to be because that's, that's an exposure issue. But we, we weren't, we weren't confident that having a Zoom type camera setup would allow us to be able to really capture what was happening. And then the last thing was the equipment to, to run that system because there's a, there's a significant investment. You can't just throw a Chromebook on a table and open it. You know that. It has to, you have to have, uh, some quality equipment to make that work the right way. But, but we did, we did consider it and, 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 and it was something that we were looking at closely because, um, just like your friend in the other state, it, it's, it's a decent quality. It's a decent option if you can make it work.
Yeah, I know, I know that, that district that she's in invested quite a bit of money on getting each of those teachers that high quality camera that's needed.
Yep.
Um, with the Bluetooth capability.
Yeah. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Okay, up next is Jillian. Jillian, if you could state your name and address for the record, unmute your microphone.
Hi, Jillian Morrow, 55 Red Oak Drive. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, so I just had a couple of questions. I have, um, two children in elementary that we opted to send them back. And my son starts kindergarten next week and I was feeling okay about it. But after listening to this, I'm, I'm kind of getting a little nervous. The class sizes seem to be bigger than we were anticipating. And the fact that you don't have the Plexiglas, um, and it might not be there in time, um, has me concerned. And then I know Dawn mentioned, you know, well, we won't have as many kids in the school so they can spread out. But then you also said just before that, that you don't have enough teachers to spread out. So how would that work to get them far enough apart from each other, especially when it came time to eating lunches and whatnot?
Yeah, yeah, two things. One is, um, Mrs. Bean Jarelli had mentioned a little bit earlier, I don't know if you caught it, that we're going to get a partial shipment on those, uh, partitions for the students that have already shipped. So we, we should have those in place by next week because don't forget you have Monday to, Monday to Wednesday are the screening days and the first day for everybody in school, kindergarten is Thursday. Um, the other thing that we're looking at in the short term is looking at the, the teacher assistants and some of the staff that work at the upper levels that have kids on full distance learning and bringing some of that staff into the elementary to help with some supervision while we work out some of the kinks.
Okay, um, so that's good. It seems like we, we should be okay for at least phase one for the, for the younger kids. Um, you also mentioned, you know, these class sizes as we go up. Again, I have another child in elementary. She's going to third grade. And it sounds like you guys kind of take one of the teachers and assign them to distance learning only. And then you have to divide up everybody else between two teachers. Um, has it been, you know, considered to maybe try to hire somebody else for the distant learning piece and actually keep all your teachers in the classroom so you're not having to put as many kids in one classroom at a time?
I mean, it, it would be a wonderful option. The problem is that the financial impact is significant. Uh, we, we, we're, we're struggling to, to keep ourselves moving along with the faculty that we have on staff now to bring in, to bring in distance learning people to teach, um, just, just to those students would be a, a significant impact on the operational budget for the school department. But I will say to you that, um, one of the things that, that, um, goes along with this is, because I don't want people to think it's, it's, it's just a random thing. If we only have a few distance learning kids at, let's say, Western in third grade and, and it doesn't really justify assigning a teacher to that group, we'll actually combine those Western students with students maybe at Hopkins Hill or Washington Oak. And so one distance learning teacher in, in a few different places may have students from two different schools. Because we can't justify assigning a teacher to, uh, you know, a half dozen kids. But if we can put kids together from two schools to make a full class, then we can, we can assign a teacher to that, um, that group of kids. That, that's one way we're trying to mitigate keeping those, by keeping those numbers from going out of hand.
Okay, thank you. Um, I appreciate everything you guys are doing. I know, believe me, I, I don't envy any of your positions right now. Um, there is no right answer for anything and, um, I, I still get anxious every night thinking about it. But, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jillian.
Okay, up next is Alita. If you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Oh, hi. It's Alita Hall, 6272 Flat River Road. Uh, I just had a question related to, um, options for before and after care. Westwood YMCA said that they were waiting on confirmation from the district as to whether or not they'd be allowed in the school. So I'm just trying to figure out, has that decision been made? Will they be allowed back at Western in Washington Oak for their standard programs?
Hi, Alita. I'm going to pass this one to the superintendent if he doesn't mind.
I, I don't mind at all. So we, uh, we've been working together, Mike, um, Norcklen and myself since July. Uh, part of it was, um, just our, our phased in plan. I think, uh, right as of today, we've identified that there, there, um, there may not be space right now initially at Washington Oak because we've taken over other spaces, that we used to use for this, uh, in terms of maybe the gym, but the gym could be, you know, some buildings could be where the nurses are or where the teachers are. And so, um, but, you know, I, I believe, uh, and again, I, I can't speak for, for Western, but Western may have a space. But I'm also working with, with, uh, Mr. Norcklen on trying to find another space in town for individuals who may have their students doing, uh, distance learning where they could open, uh, every single day. The problem is that there are very few spaces. We were hoping initially to use maybe the rec center or even the annex as a gym here, but there's other individuals utilizing that. They had looked at using a space in a church. So I, I know this is something we liked last week or a month ago, but we're still working together. Um, it's, it's just not that, wasn't that simple in terms of saying, here's the space you can use before and after school. So, um, it's still an ongoing conversation. I know he had sent something out about, you know, they did it with Exeter-West Greenwich and, you know, we've so, um, been able to identify a space, but it's because, you know, this has to do with our plan. We can't do before and after school when our school's not open. So, um, you know, I don't know if Ms. Anzalone's here, but I, I believe Western may, but I don't want to, she and I did not speak today, but she did reach out to me. So, but I can tell you, as of today, we don't seem to have a space at Washington Oak.
Oh, am I still unmuted? Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thanks, Alita.
Thanks, Alita.
Okay, and up next is Amanda. If you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Amanda, uh, 7-Go Run.
Go ahead, Amanda. We can, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Dawn, I just wanted to say thank you. Um, opening that Google slide today was definitely a much better reaction than a week ago. I may have three elementary school kids in three different grades and the panic that set in last week was a little bad. Um, so I definitely want to thank you for the more clear, realistic goals that you guys have put in for the next few weeks. It definitely gives, my husband and I, who both work, I'm an essential employee. I work for a doctor's office and he has been working from home and it's impossible for him to work with the kids at home. So I just want to say thank you. I've been extremely verbal for the past few weeks and months, as my friends can tell you. Um, and I just want to say thank you. That's it to you and both to Luke Murray, who also has been working, um, on the budget front with the money aspect. I saw what he put out today and I want to say thank you to Luke also.
Thanks, Amanda. I appreciate the feedback.
Thanks, Amanda.
Okay, and next up is another Amanda. If you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your mic.
Hi, it's Amanda Eldana, 521 Reed Schoolhouse Road. I want to also thank you guys for everything that you have been doing. Um, and I had some questions, uh, in regards to the high school and, and really the career tech, uh, program. And, and I just want to comment too on, um, I just learned a few minutes ago that my kids were essentially, like I did all the surveys and everything and I put them in for remote learning. Uh, my youngest is immune compromised, so I felt the best way to go about keeping him safe was to keep my other ones home from the high school, just to ensure that there'd be no cross contamination because unfortunately he doesn't have a good immune system and we have a lot of health concerns with him. Um, so to keep him safe, we decided to opt in remote learning. So I emailed, um, as soon as I seen the schedules come out, uh, because I noticed that they had said if you were doing, um, remote learning, that they were going to message you because some courses might not be op, are op, offered any longer. So I waited and I didn't hear anything. So I thought, you know, they're really busy and I know this is not an easy task, um, for anyone. So I got no response back. Uh, I emailed three times in regards to trying to make sure that they were actually enrolled in the remote learning. Um, and then I received an email saying that a lot of people were questioning schedules and that they'd get back to them when they had time or what have you. But I just got the sense that they weren't enrolled correctly. Um, so tonight I had Noah send out an email this afternoon and I found out that they weren't enrolled correctly, um, which I'm sure these things are going to happen. But I also think now I just got the information that these career tech programs, they're not going to be able to do. So Catherine would be her second year in nursing and Noah would be his first year in IT. Um, now I had kind of thought that nursing is going to be difficult to do from a remote standpoint. So I have enrolled her in the summer in a CNA program, um, through RIDE. Uh, just to kind of, just in case it wasn't going to be offered for her because of that, I'm kind of confused as to why IT would not be offered, seeing how that is something, it's all computer based. So even learning, that is something they can do from home and I just feel that it's kind of taking away from them. So now I, I'm in the position of either sending my son to the school so he can continue with his IT program. Or I have to figure out whatever the, in Judy, I forgot the name, it's something, uh, that you guys have for remote learning based, what programs they may have offered and/or if I do feel that it becomes safe to put him back in, now he can no longer do the IT program because, um, I guess he was no longer in that. He, he dropped that because of being home, which is no fault of his own. It's because of his younger brother, you know, immune compromised. I just think it's not a, unfortunately, it, it's not a fair position for him to be in or, I, I guess, and I guess my, my whole thing is he's having to, we're having to change. So now I have to decide whether or not I'm going to send them into the school so he can continue his education and/or Catherine can continue the education that she already started last year, which was something that they did do remote last year. So I'm kind of wondering why this isn't something they can continue to do remotely if they were able to do it last year. And if you're going to be doing.
So Mrs. Eldana, I, I don't want to, I, I don't want to say more than I should because this is definitely a conversation I want you to have with a, a high school administrator. Um, so I can say one or two things, since you're having some difficulty connecting with somebody. Uh, if you email me or call me tomorrow, I can try to facilitate that connection so that you can either talk to Mrs. Bowden or Mrs. Ferguson. And I'm not going to say that the answer they give you is going to be exactly the answer you want, but at least you'll get a response and you'll have an idea of what is going on so you can make an informed decision about what you want to do with the kids.
That would be wonderful. And then, and the other thing is, I think this is why you're having a lot of changes from people wanting to go to distant to back to school because unfortunately we don't have all the information. Because originally when I put them up for distance, I had no clue that they were going to lose part of something that they already started. Uh, like Catherine would be dropping out of nursing essentially by doing remote since last year we started in that. So when I filled out the surveys, I was like, yep, she's home. There's nothing to it. But now I might have to flop back and say, you know what, guys? I know I said she's going to be remote, but now she's going to be in person. So I think that's where you're having that, since we don't have all the information. And I know it's difficult for you guys too, because you don't have all the information.
Right.
But I think that's where you're having, we're all having that issue.
Yeah, and that's, that's the biggest struggle we're having with, uh, with everybody, right? Administrators feel it because every time there's a change, they have to change it. Teachers feel it because their classes, uh, schedules are not done. And then parents obviously are frustrated because they don't have all the information, which leaves their kids looking at them, you know, wanting answers. So it's a trickle down. It, 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 there's no excuse for it, but it's a trickle down. Well, if you give me a call or an email tomorrow morning, I know you have both.
I do.
I will, uh, try to facilitate a conversation with them.
Thank you, Mr. Coward. I appreciate, and I just, again, thank you to everybody. And if I sound upset, I'm not. I just want you to know, you know, I appreciate everything that you guys are doing and I think it, it's a very difficult position for everybody to be in. And so thank you.
Yep.
And I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Perfect.
Thank you, Amanda. Well, I think that might be it, Mr. Murphy.
That is it.
All right. Um, thank you, everyone, for all your questions.
Thank you, everyone, for all your questions and comments. We're going to move on to agenda item number seven, which is the increase the substitute rates, which was our reference four. Mr. Levis, did you want to start this?
Sure, I just want to first say, Don, I thought Mr. Coward did a phenomenal job and I want to thank him. So I know that's not the agenda item, but so very quickly, you see the.
Actually, Mr. Levis, I'm sorry, I want to interrupt for one moment. I do apologize. I'm, I have two issues with this agenda item. First issue I have is that our substitute rate of pay is part of the CTA contract in section 6-4.3. And, and if, if that dictates this conversation, then I don't think the agenda item is posted properly. And second point is, if this is indeed a contract discussion, I would have to recuse myself.
It's a good question that I do not have any answer for right now. I'm trying to think.
Should we table this item, Mr. Levis?
Maybe, could we have a conversation and just not? Again, I, I'm just throwing this out there. Is it possible to have a conversation about it and not vote on it?
Well, you can do whatever you want. If you're, I, if the conversation continues, I will recuse out of, out of an abundance of caution.
That would include me as well.
So could we maybe just talk about this in theory under the budget item? And then if we need to go back and look at a potential MOA with the CTA, you know, we could, we could have that as a different agenda item and we can address the need and why this was brought up under the FY21 budget?
That would actually make more sense.
Okay, then why don't we just move on to item number eight, which is the FY21 budget, COVID budget, town council, school committee update.
Right, I'm going to be very brief, just saying that, you know, we just went through the plan that Mr. Coward presented and there's a lot of that plan that is contingent on funding. You know, we heard today, you know, and that's all I'm going to say to start. I'll turn it over to Ms. Mangerelli.
Jim, can you put the budget document up on the screen? Thank you. So I tried to consolidate this in a slightly different format to put everything on one page because I know there's a lot of confusion with the pre-COVID budget versus what we need for COVID. We still are operating without an official town budget, so we are operating level funded. So I will go through this and then on the second page, it is specific to COVID and we will break out where funds are coming from and what items we're moving forward with using some of the federal funds and really what the gap is as we really need to have some type of secure financing nailed down before we proceed much further into the school year. I'm, I'm super hesitant to operate a budget with such a significant known deficit, both due to not having a town operating budget and having to make a lot of cuts that definitely impact our educational offerings, but also to make sure that we can continue throughout the year, making sure that we have all the supplies necessary for COVID response. So just the very top section, pre, the general operations, so our pre-COVID, that was our original budget request for the total revenue. I backed out the original additional increase for town appropriations of 1.8 million, bringing our general fund operating revenue down to the 72 million. You'll see the asterisk there because we still are operating at 91% of our state education aid. So if the state passes a different budget, that number could potentially go down. I highly doubt it's going to go up, but that 72 million ultimately could go down further, depending on what the state decides to do. From the federal funds, we have two groups of federal money. The first was the ESAR money. This was the money announced in the spring, $42 million. The intent of that money was to offset the FY20 cut in state aid of 623,000. So originally, when we were looking at carryover numbers and all of that, we looked at a stable number essentially for state aid. Because this was the only federal funds that we had available, we had to make the decision to use some of that money for FY21 to order the Chromebooks for the elementary kids so that we were prepared for students that needed devices, whether we end up in a distance learning environment or even for those who don't have access otherwise to the, to a Chromebook. So we had to take 330,000 of that, 623,000 and move it from FY20 into FY21, which was a completely acceptable use, but it did change what our carryover number would be and we'll, we'll get to that in a little bit. The next money is the supplemental relief fund. That's the $50 million that was given by the state. Our share is $747,000. This application for these monies was released, I believe, about two, two and a half weeks ago. We did submit our application last week, so it was not correct when the governor said that no school districts have submitted this. We submitted it on September 3rd. And I want to state that neither that application nor the ESAR funds application has been completely approved through all channels of RIDE. So this is a reimbursement money, so we have to spend money first and then request reimbursement. So we are spending money, but I don't have the ability to request that $1 million in reimbursement yet. That brings our total current revenue to 73 million, 73,563 with the operating budget and then the federal funds available for COVID. Going down to the expenditures, we did basically the same thing. We took our pre-COVID operating budget expenditures of the 74 million. And again, that was the number that we had said we needed or we anticipated spending for normal operations prior to COVID. We had to reduce expenditures out of the budget and the same amount of the level funding of the appropriations in the 1.8 million in order to have a balanced pre-COVID operating budget. That brought our general fund operating budget expenditures down to the 72 million. We have an estimated COVID response cost of 3.6 million. We did adjust that from the last meeting. We did take out the nursing pods. So we have some schools using classrooms, some schools using libraries, some schools using gyms. So they're a little bit all over the place, but we are making do best we can with that. We also dropped down custodians from 12 to nine, thinking that that was the minimum that we could get by with. That brought our total expenditures to 76 million. So as you can see, if I'm looking at a revenue stream of 73 million and I have expenditures of 76 million, we have a budget shortfall of 2.5. And that is even after cutting out the operating expenditures that the school committee voted on last, last week. The next line is the estimated FY20 carryover. So this is essentially savings from last school year. Previously, I was carrying about 1.3 million. That is the reason that that dropped to the 990,000 was because we used some of the federal money to move into FY21 instead of backfilling completely the state education aid in FY20. So net-net, it still goes to the COVID response, it's just in the fiscal year that it's being presented in. With that said, if we, if we have the estimated carryover, which again, that number won't be finalized until the audit's complete. But if we use that carryover amount, we still need a minimum of 1.6 million from the rainy day fund or some other funding stream in order to fund the COVID operations. If we want to reinstate all of the expenditures that were cut out of the budget because we don't have a town budget and we're operating on last year's level funded, we would need the additional 1.8 million that we've requested all along through the entire budget season from the town. So again, the 1.8 million is to get us back to normal operations. The additional 1.6 is the COVID response money that we would need. So Jim, if you want to go to the second page. Those lines are a little squished together, my apologies. But what I tried to do, and this is somewhat of the format that we sent in to RIDE with the supplemental aid application. I broke out the COVID response expenditures and showed which ones we were proposing to put into federal aid and which ones, which are the ones highlighted in red, are the ones that we need additional funding for. So just going down the list quickly, we had talked about additional staff development. It's an hour per staff, just making sure that we are preparing our educators as best as possible in the new environment that we're operating under. We had talked about an IT technician with the significant increase in devices that will be used in the school. We also have Jim as a director of technology now and his previous position was not filled. We're concerned about just being able to maintain the devices that we will be operating throughout the year. We did decrease the original custodian request from 12 to nine. And we also did change the additional nurse teachers to RNs. So that did drop again a little bit from the previous request. Supervisory assistance, this number is staying pretty true. And, and from things that keep me up at night, this is one that I'm most nervous about. So if we have students eating in classroom, they need to be supervised. So we would need to look to hire supervisory assistants and have them in place when all students return to make sure that we have adequate coverage while the students are eating and also give our own staff time to have their own lunch breaks. Substitutes, I know this was being discussed in, in the chats and obviously the previous agenda item. We are extremely concerned about two things. One, having availability of the subs to even higher and also what that's going to do to our budget. So this is just an estimated increase based on, you know, what we had spent last year and we did our best guess to bump that up. We have heard that several districts are significantly raising their sub rates to make sure that they can, they can secure subs faster than the other districts. I think if we leave our sub rates at where we are at, this dollar amount is almost going to be irrelevant because I don't know if we'll be able to even have the bodies as substitutes to, to pay to have them cover when there's a teacher absence. The next group of information is just the benefits associated with all those staffing positions listed. Going down to technology software, we have expanded some of our software to make sure that we have a more robust program. So we looked at iXL, we expanded Ingenuity. During the spring, a lot of softwares expanded their service at no additional cost. That is not the case come fall, so we did put money in there to make sure that we could expand those offerings. Purchase services for HVAC and air quality. So this would be any additional work that needs to be done throughout our buildings. As Mr. Levis said, we are in fairly good shape at the moment to reopen, but we do have to consider what that's going to look like throughout the year and what that's going to look like in the winter and what we need to do to upgrade our systems to be able to handle not just next week, but when everybody returns. Hotspots to ensure equitable access. So we have purchased, we purchased in the spring hotspots for those who do not have any other access to the internet to make sure that they, their students can stay engaged in the virtual learning. The consultant for indoor air quality, who we all chatted with earlier this evening, we put that into the code response and also put that into the federal aid. Health and safety supplies, this is another one that I'm very concerned about. We have really no idea how fast we're going to burn through PP&amp;E, whether it be nursing supplies, hand sanitizers for classrooms throughout the building, gowns, gloves, we're, we're really in uncharted territory. And this is an estimate that we put in here based on an initial nursing order that was given, you know, back in the spring. So really, as the months continue, we'll see how much that covers. But I am, I'm definitely nervous that if we start burning through bottles upon bottles of sanitizer faster than we projected, our supply money could be short. Same with cleaning supplies. This is an estimated increase for cleaning and sanitation above and beyond what we have budgeted for general maintenance. Electrostatic sprayers, Plexiglas wooden construction signage. Again, these are all just to stay in compliance with making sure that we are keeping safe distances and safe spacers. Meal carts, so because we're doing lunch in the classrooms, we did apply for a grant. So we did receive some money, I'm sorry, we did receive some carts for some of our elementary schools, but we also need additional carts and coolers to make sure that we can transport the grab and go meals to closer vicinity of where the lunch waves are being served in all of our buildings so that students aren't traveling back and forth throughout the entire building. And HVAC air purifiers, again, this is just all to keep our systems as, in the best shape that we can. Chromebooks at the elementary schools, this supports the initiative to go one-to-one at the elementary schools, but also make sure that should circumstances change, all of our elementary students will have access to continue with virtual learning. Desk chair combo, this is something that may or may not be needed as we continue on. This was for the elementary school. You've heard that a lot of our elementary schools operate under, with tables in their classrooms. So there has been identified need that we may need desk chair combos as we continue. Desk dividers for the students, those are the elementary school student dividers that we were speaking about earlier. Plexiglas knees guards for all teachers. Again, we ordered 500 of those and the intent was for close contact working. If we have staff that we anticipate will be doing close contact working, we will need to order more, more of those if we don't have enough to go around. And then there was the discussion about having tents on a rental for three months to have outdoor gathering spaces while the weather is warm, just to create additional space for students to go to. So I think it's pretty self-explanatory where we have the federal aid coming in. And again, those applications have all been submitted and the balance of items that we don't have secured funding for.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Respect, there may be some questions, so I'm going to start with Mr. Florio. Did you have any questions for Sarah?
Sarah, if, if we go before the town council and they ask for, I have no problem here. If they ask for, if we ask for 1.8 million, would, would that be? Would, would that prove to the council when they see this that we were serious about the 1.8 million? And if we received that money, would we be able to bring back sports programs?
That's a little bit of a loaded question and I'm going to answer as best I can. You know, I will absolutely do what is the will of the school committee. From a financial perspective, if the only funds available or the additional funds given to the school was the 1.8 million, my financial recommendation, and again, please note that this is not a recommendation as a parent or a community member, strictly a financial recommendation, would be no because we still need to cover the PPE and COVID response costs. So if you look at that budget document, I'm saying we need 1.8 million to restore our operations back to normal. That is the number that includes the athletics, the clubs. I know Mr. Murray will want me to bring up the wiring, you know, when we talk about bandwidth and everything. You know, we're, we're looking at missing out on 50% cost sharing for some significant upgrades to our network by that, cutting that 1.8 million out. But we need 1.6 to make sure that we keep our students and staff safe. So from a financial perspective, I would say that we would have to allocate that money towards keeping the students safe. So if the council, if this helps the council look at our picture, you know, but I would also say that I think we've stood pretty firm throughout the entire budget process and even from the onset of COVID, I encourage them not to scoop the money in FY20. I encourage them not to level fund the budget and FY21. We needed that for operations. And even if under a worst-case scenario that we're under distance learning for the entire FY21 year, that 1.8 million could have been reinvested into our facilities and we would have started off FY2022 in a better situation. So yes, I know that that's not an answer that anybody wants to hear, but I think unfortunately, our spending has to be prioritized right now to. but I think unfortunately, our spending has to be prioritized right now towards the safety and that's a horrible position that we're all in.
So Sarah, what would be, what would be the amount to bring back sports and bring back clubs and issues that are important to graduating seniors and to parents and to kids at the high school and the middle school? How much, how much do we need to bring everything back and take care of the COVID priorities?
Yes, so to bring everything back that was cut at the last meeting, we need the 1.8 and we need the 1.6 for COVID. You know, we can pull up the, the cost sheet for you of the list of cuts and the school committee can absolutely, you know, if the town wanted to give us 1.4 in operations plus the money needed for COVID, the school committee would absolutely have that right to go through and say, we want to make sure we add these items back in. But to bring everything back, the number that we have been consistently presenting is the number that's needed to operate the schools.
So 3.4 would be the appropriate sum to ask the council, correct?
Yeah, so I'm assuming 900,000 of carryover money. So Jim, if you can, can you pull that budget, budget sheet back up, please? Just the first summary page. Okay, so to bring back the, bring back the sports, can you just go down a little bit to the bottom?
Okay, here we go.
So we would mean 3.4 million, which is the 1.594 minimum rainy day fund. And again, that's assuming the carryover and then the 1.883, which was our original operating request.
Okay, so when, so the 1.8, we could request that the money be placed in maintenance of effort. And the 1.1.594 would be to take care of the COVID. So I'm not saying that sports is more important than any, what I'm saying is that I received a lot of emails from parents whose children, who have looked into sending their children to La Salle or to other schools or to Ponte Gansett for football and for sports and for ROTC and career tech programs. And as the honors program, we have a lot of, that's $7,200 that was in the honors program. It's, parents were anticipating that program in terms of graduation for the children and opportunities for college. I'm just saying that we could get the 1.8, which is really what, what, what the vote was. I mean, people were very clear that they wanted the schools to get 1.8 million on the maintenance of effort. And the other piece is with the, so that would take care of that piece. And the one point, almost say 1.6 million would take care of COVID and that could be taken out of the rainy day fund. So I don't see what, where that would be that, that big an issue. Because I think right now, the town is in a good financial position and the schools are not. It, I find it troublesome that you have to, you have to go to John Onnit and say, please, John, can you give us some money for the month? We need this money for operations. And what I find very discouraging is that people are using that, the way it was placed out, the way it was put forward to the community about the stipends that were given people for working to, oh, over a year without a vacation and volunteering their time to assist the schools in the savings of us, of you, using that money and splitting up those positions are being used against you. And my feeling is, nobody really understands the true, the true nature of what's going on because of a misinformation campaign that's being placed out there.
Dave, can I just jump in for one second, Madam Chair?
Absolutely, Greg, absolutely, go ahead.
I don't want to, I don't want to take long, no, no, all I'm saying is that we've been clear, Sarah's been clear about our needs. The fact that the budget failed July 16th level funded, nothing's been put forward. The fact that the council had offered rainy day funds, I mean, I think, you know, the school committee can do what they choose to do, but I think that's why this, this whole conversation also leads into the joint town council slash school department meeting next Wednesday. We know sports, I mean, there's a lot of issues. What Sarah is saying though is that, what Sarah is saying is that we have our priorities. We will not go back into school if we do not have the resources necessary, custodians. So I mean, that, that is clear. So I think that's the point, Sarah, Sarah was an athlete, you know what I mean? Many people, but the bottom line is what direction will the committee want to take? I think when we go to that joint town council meeting. I listened to the last, one of the last council meetings, only two individuals asked about when they're going to put a budget for it and they were both running for office. So I mean, it's time for voices to be heard and, you know, I think it's clear that we have a lot going on before, we've been very clear. We'd like to stand, stay with our position. There's conversation that's taking place about some other way of getting, us getting some type of money, but I think we just have to be adamant and I'm hoping that the public understands that, you know, the numbers that Sarah presented are the 1.8 plus the 1.6 because safety has to come first, but we know that this is heart wrenching. I mean, I wouldn't accept this in my community of Attleboro, you know? I would not accept this and I hope this community doesn't. But all that other stuff, I mean, this is the bottom line. You know, this is where we're at, there needs to be a budget put forward. And, you know, I think it's important to see where the committee stands as a whole for, for next Wednesday night.
Well, you know where I stand. You know, you know where I stand, I want 3.4 million. I don't care how we, how they get about doing it, how they go about doing it, but I feel we need 3.4 million, 1.8 million for safety and for security and for the COVID virus and then the other 1.6 million to restore the cuts that we made to the community. Because the council is responsible for us being in this situation. It's not the school committee, Greg, it's, it's the council. And we all know this, we all know this. But that's my feeling, that, that's how I feel about it. I don't know how, I don't know what the other committee members think because quite honestly, I haven't spoken to the other committee members about it. But that's, that's how I feel. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for your indulgences, indulgences, indulgences. And thank you, Sarah, for, for putting on a great presentation as always. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Obviously, per open meetings, we have to discuss this kind of information in the public. So that's why we haven't discussed this separately in some other venue. So we get your message that, you know, we need the 1.8 for our operating and the 1.6 for COVID. That being said, Mr. Murray, you're next, you have any questions for Sarah?
I do, can you hear me okay, Sarah? Okay, I had to switch computers in the midst of everything, I had a dying, dying piece of equipment. All right, a couple of things, I have a few notes on. One is the, the second page, the carryover sheet on the spreadsheet. Noticing that there's not a carryover cost on that, is that just something that was missed? Or is that something that was intentional?
Right, so I could have added in the carryover column at the bottom. My only view is that that's not a definite secured funding because we still have to get through the end of the audit. We're, we're going to roll the dice on that one truly and say, we're hoping that that's where everything comes in that and we're going to draw that down. But I tried to put in like true funding stream. So if we want, when we present that to the council, if you would like me to add in a column for carryover, I am more than happy to do that. But yes, you'll see that, that, that net amount that says the rainy day fund request or the 2.5 million carries over to the first page and then is further reduced by the 990,000.
I was just saying, if you're showing both sheets, it gets confusing because you have one number versus the other. What's our request? If we're going to write for rainy day, then we need to be specific, we need to be pointed. So we just need to pick a lane. So that's my comment there. A couple of questions on the, the spreadsheet. And this goes back to some of our early discussions, feels like Groundhog Day. What, what, as far as the positions are concerned, realistically, we're going back to school right over the next month and we're going to be moving into, we have 40 SRP, have we retained any?
So here's the reality of the situation. Because I don't have secure funding and I am technically not supposed to deficit spend, to secure positions without a funding stream is not an appropriate method. So we are stuck for sure on this. Because we're starting back slowly, we think that we can finagle staff enough to get coverage for the, for the soft, what did you call it, Don, soft opening? So, you know, that we can kind of roll in, but I, I have expressed this and probably Don and Craig are so sick of hearing me say it. I don't know what we're going to do if we don't have these people secured by October 13th because we need supervision in those classrooms. And that is, you know, that is probably, again, like I said, the thing that's bothering me the most right now is where we're going to get those, those bodies.
So I guess pulling in a reality in this situation, we're meeting with council next week, even if they take action the end of September and we manage to take this to an FDM, there is no way that we're going to secure funding for October 13th. So I go back to my question is, you know, we're saying, and here's my problem, I'm playing devil's advocate. If I'm sitting on council, I'm going to say, well, you're opening, right? You, without these nurses, without the custodians, without all these people. So, so tell me exactly why, you know, where we should spend more rainy day funds. And again, I'm not advocating one way or another, but we're going to have to answer that question.
Mr. Murray, I'm just saying the answer, we won't, we won't open. So I stated that very quickly before Don started speaking tonight. We're in dire straits, this is not, you know, like my frustration is, as superintendent is, I don't know, you know, how to get, when only, it's been crickets really in terms of asking the council to bring forward another budget. We've had the same consistent message since the council proposed the level funded. And, you know, now we have clear understanding, but if we don't have access to those resources, we will not open, there's no way we can open, I mean, we will, we will stop the phase, then we'll have a conversation as a school department, do we just go to distance learning? Is it fair, are we going to just keep kindergarten, pre-K, maybe grades one in school and nobody else? Or one and two, because we can't, you know, can't continue to open in the different phases? I mean, that is our reality. I don't know how to be more clear.
I appreciate the answer and it is clear, the issue is that what's not clear is the timeline. So we're saying by mid-September, we're starting to bring kids in the classrooms and then by October 13th, which I just said, there is no possible way that even if council agreed, we can have that funding secured and then we have to go hire the people. So this is a real, it's, I don't expect an answer tonight, but this is something that we're going to get hammered. And it's something that needs, we need to think this through because the timelines don't match up. There's going to be kids in school by the time we're making this request. And I'm not trying to be difficult, but it doesn't pass the logic. So I'm just, we've got to vet this out and if we can do with less, and I'm not saying we should, but maybe we have a two-phase plan, we say, listen, you know, yes. And if the answer is, we're scraping by to open, but we can't stay open, then that's at least an answer. But we're, we're apparently opening and we'll be, you know, we'll be opening by the time this meeting occurs next week. So I just, it's, it's likely to come up. So I'll leave it at that, I just, it's a concern.
The good thing will be, and the last, I'm hoping the council at least asks questions because with four budget workshops and only one council member asking questions about the budget during four budget workshops, at least I'm hoping that there'll at least be dialogue. And we have a responsibility to open, we have a responsibility and, you know, again, so we're doing what we need to do, but we also recognize that, you know, we've been offered rainy day funds. That was very quick to be offered early, you know, when, when they talked about level funding and we talked about our COVID-19 needs. And I don't know the process, so maybe Wednesday night, we do, when it's clear that we need these individuals to continue to stay open, maybe the council, maybe there's a process where they could offer us those funds to access them. And again, I don't know the process, but that's, that's our only hope because we know going before the town to have another vote on a budget is going to take some time.
Yeah, I'll get into that, I'm just mainly speaking to the court, so.
Well, Luke, Luke, we have to be united on this. I mean, you've been getting the emails as, as well as I.
Dave, I'm not saying I'm not united.
I know, I know that, I know you're playing devil's advocate, but at the same time, this council, we've got to take the gloves off and we have to tell them. I mean, that's, that's what people are asking me to take the gloves off, you know?
With all due respect, Dave, what we need to do is come at them with actual data and facts and vetted thoughts, not.
I understand.
We've done that before, it doesn't go anywhere. The reason they didn't ask questions the first time is because they knew they were going to go to zero. If you don't ask questions, if you don't care, they're going to care because it's going to come out of the town's pocket. They're going to ask questions because this is going to cost them money and not going to have a lot of choices on the matter because there's going to be pressure. So speaking frankly, they're going to ask questions. So I'm asking as a member that we look at these questions and have. Along those lines, one other question on the sheets, Sarah, Chromebook. I'm assuming the Chromebooks that we already ordered were for the secondary?
No, so, so the Chromebooks for the secondary were part of the 1.8 cut. So we were due to start a new Chromebook lease for grades six through 12 this year. That was taken out and I do want to say that we actually significantly reduced that lease payment from the previous lease payment in order to free up funds within the existing budget to do some of the networking and take advantage of the 50%. So this hurts on a, on a lot of different levels that we got rid of that entire section of the budget. The 330,000 is for grades K to five. They are not one to one, so we wanted to make sure that our elementary grades were at least prepared. So we are stumbling through with the existing six through 12 Chromebooks.
You had mentioned we fronted money from last year's fiscal year, we had to order into the 21.
Yes.
Where did those go?
Those are that for the elementary Chromebooks.
Okay, so what I'm seeing on the sheet?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's, that was really my question. Okay, so I'll launch into the other thing I want to talk about, which is, you know, obviously, like everyone knows where we started with this, this goes on for eight months. I've been trying to communicate with people that we've been talking about this. Now, what words, we're getting close to a year on the budget. We knew the cuts early on, we made 1.5 million of cuts. We knew we wanted 1.20, we were consistent with that as a committee. We advocated for that, we railed on that, I went on the radio about that. We all thought that was a poor decision on council's part and regardless, they went forward with it. And we said exactly. And we said exactly what you said earlier tonight, Sarah, was, if we, even if we get the 1.8, we happen to have extra, we can finally shore up a budget, which has always been strung out on a line. They chose not to do that, and I said in June, and I was very clear on this, I believe it was June 23rd when they took their vote, I'll go back. But that I would lay this on their feet, if this came around to bite them. Well, here we are. So, they own this. And for anyone listening, they own it. So, reach out to the council, because we notified them, we advocated for the students, we were very clear on that. Now we're even in a worse situation, what I'm learning tonight, because we don't even have enough money to cover the COVID. So even if we get this 1.8 passed and we don't get rainy day funds, we're gonna be in a disadvantage situation. So with that, you know, I'm seeing the 1.5, let's say even if we had to whittle it down, we have a rainy day fund request. So, I certainly stand with Dave, and hopefully the rest of the committee, that this whole package needs funding. Um, I think there is shared responsibility for our state legislature, which has been basically dead on arrival. And, the governor for not recognizing that we need additional monies, even after we sent them a resolution. So, there's a lot of blame to go around, and I'll lay, but the 1.8, I laid directly on the council's, because we, you know, I was very clear, when this went forward, that that's where I would advocate, or I would come back with. And, uh, and I certainly have no problem with it. When we sit down next week, I'll remind them of that fact. As far as the rainy day funds, I would recommend, depending on how next week goes, that we come up with a resolution that's very pointed, as a group, to advocate for that rainy day fund request. So it's not just an administration request, that we as a co-ask group make that request. Um, and we're standing behind it. I think we need something formal. Now, hopefully, the town meeting goes well, and maybe the acquiesce or request, my guess is, they're gonna say very, thank you very much, and walk away from the table while considering. So I would urge the committee, from my side, to have a very quick resolution beyond that, stake our claim to the rainy day funds, which were offered by the town manager, and the reason was that they, they wanted to get away from the maintenance effort. I don't disagree with their thoughts, this is a one-time event, uh, events and costs. So to add to the maintenance of effort beyond a 1.8 million dollar increase, certainly wouldn't make sense, and I don't even know if we could. But the 1.5, 1.6, um, I do definitely think we could, could stake our claim to that. On a final note, Dave mentioned the parent. I've received the same email. I sent all of them an email tonight, very lengthy email. It was, it was the same email to all dozen that I received. And it was exactly what I just said, that I don't wanna cut sports, I don't wanna cut activity. This is affecting my own family, my own daughter, my own son. This is not something we as a committee, I believe, and I don't wanna speak for everybody, but that we ever advocated for or wanted to do. But it would be budgetarily unsound for us to just randomly put sports back in. Once we put one sport in, we've gotta put everything back. Because it's unfair to one parent to have a kid in drama, and one in football, and we fund one but not the other. And it's upwards of, if I remember correctly, $900,000 to $1 million. That's no small number.
Absolutely correct.
Priority right now has to be kids in school, getting kids situated, because on top of everything, parents need to go back to work, and they need some security. So, I empathize with every one of those families. My heart breaks for the kid. But right now, from a pragmatic standpoint, we've gotta keep the district running, and it, yes, it is that. So, um, the, and, you know, I'll leave it at this, there's been, you know, we're gonna get accused as using the kids as a pawn in this whole thing, we always do. And, and that, and maybe in the past, that's been some practice, I can tell you adamantly, that is not the practice this year. We are desperately in a cash flow negative situation, that, I know, I've talked to Sarah extensively on this, and I try to communicate with her. And we're not in a good position, and we should be, quite frankly. And I think moving forward, we need to learn from this and become more sustainable as a district. This is not good enough for our taxpayers, it's not good enough for our parents, it's not good enough for our students. And moving forward from this, we really have to, to learn from it, and figure out how to get, my hope is, council learn from it, and, and learn that we cannot operate on minimum thresholds. We don't have fund balance, we don't have flexibility, and this, this specific scenario required, and we fail. So Dave, I'll leave you with this. I am in with you. I think it needs to be a well-thought-out strategy. I think that we need to approach council hard next week, and we need to have a resolution in unison for that rainy day fund. Leave it there.
Thank you, Luke. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mrs. Colonian?
We're in this position right now because the town council did not put forth the budget. We do not, we're operating on last year's budget, we're not operating on this year's budget. You know, there's no budget, they have, they just sat back and just haven't put forth the budget. So we're gonna meet with them, and we're gonna ask for all this money. But still, I can see, I understand the rainy day fund, but that 1.8 million, we can ask for. What, there's two things that have to happen here, is that the town needs to put forth a 2021 budget, funding us, number one. Number two, we have to have the all-day referendum, and it has to be voted by the people. So if everybody wants this to happen, then we've gotta start putting the word out there. Number one, get our budget, and number two, pass it. And, um, and, you know, and the rainy day fund affects the bonds, so, you know, I'm not that thrilled about using that money, I really am not. I think that they should really look at funding a good portion of the money through, well, I, I know the maintenance of effort, but, you know, I, I still think that, um, we, we definitely, we gotta get the vote out there, we've gotta get people to, to vote a good budget, and, and then we can, we can work with it. But, you know, Dave, I, I hear you, I, I actually, I got all the emails too, and it breaks my heart. It really does. I did not wanna see all of that go. We do need to have safety first. And, you know, and if we can't get any other money, and the only money we can get is for, uh, COVID, we have to use that for that. That's, you know, we have to, we don't have a choice. But I think that, you know, the town council needs to come up with a good budget, and, you know, fund the schools the way they should be. That's my soapbox out. Step off now and let Mr. Pearson talk.
Thank you, Mrs. Colonian. Uh, Mr. Pearson?
Ah, it's almost 10 o'clock. Um, just a reminder. Questions, and, and then I guess I'll get on the, the soapbox. I have a question about the calculus here. It, it, one thing I don't see taken into account, in our 1.8 million dollar ask, that, that we asked for previously, uh, for the normal operating budget, is the fact that we are now in a, a month of partial distance learning, which means, again, some of our resources and our needs for a period of time, about 10% of, of the school year, maybe a little less, are, are reduced, but I, I don't, I don't see anything in here. What is our, our anticipated cost savings? Believe it or not, it's a weird thing to say when we're, we don't have any money. But, but this distance learning situation, are we realizing any, any partial savings due to staffing reductions? Like we mentioned, we can't fill SRP roles, so how is that shaking up? How are we still stuck at 1.8 million, when, when we have a month of distance learning additional?
So, um, and Mr. Levis, you can jump in, but we are not, not staffing any positions. Those positions are above and beyond what we have. So as of next week, all of the staff that we have are coming in, um, in order to support students, to get ready, um, support in the classrooms, so this, while we're still, while we're slightly delayed in the year, we're still looking at 180 days of operating. So our buildings have not been shut down, they've been working in all summer. Staffing over the summer was pretty much consistent with how any other summer has gone, even from a transportation perspective, and, and again, that's one, you'll notice that we took that out of the COVID budget, because we had talked about hybrid and, and whatnot, and we said, we'll pull it out, but we have no idea what those busing routes are gonna be. Um, but so as of now, we're still looking at the full 180 days of operating expenses, so none of that has really gone down. Yeah, and, do I speak to the staffing?
I mean, I think we're, if we were gonna be in distance learning and not transitioning, um, you know, we can talk about food service, we thought we'd have some significant savings, and we look at, you know, our transportation, but how we're gonna run the routes. We thought we might have some savings, but those aren't materializing, so, um, you know, and, and in fact, we may end up, as we mentioned before, you know, we could, even the staffing that we talked about now, there could be scenarios where if certain students come back from distance learning, but we can't put them in a classroom, we may have to open up additional classrooms with additional teachers while continuing on distance learning, so you know, we were hoping to have savings, but they did not, they're not materializing. And we've had some support, like the, the SRP has been flexible in terms of how we can utilize staff, and, uh, that's, that's been helpful to us, so.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting question. I'm sorry, I, I get it now, we're, we're the, we're talking about additional staff on top of what our normal staffing patterns are. I'm gonna say what I said before, and I took some flak for it, but I'm gonna say it again, because it's worth saying, because you know, we do it to ourselves sometimes. We had three months of distance learning in the spring, and we made no staffing reductions. I, I really think that's abhorrent, it, it's, we could have saved more money. I know we didn't anticipate the pandemic to go as long as it did, but at least it would have cushioned a small portion of, of what we're facing now. We would have had some one-time funds, or, or some funds staved up for some one-time COVID-related expenses. Now we have distance learning again for a month, the whole high school is shut down pretty much for a month, well, not the whole high school, but you know what I mean? Uh, high school students are distance learning for the next month, and again, I'm being told we're, we're receiving no personnel savings or, or other kind of costs, because the entire building is practically shut down. Don't like, don't like that situation, and if you think I'm being harsh, just, just wait until the town council starts asking those same questions. As Luke, Luke decided to play devil's advocate, as am I, these are questions we need to be prepared to answer.
Yeah, I guess I might, you know, again, I, I know it's not, uh, I mean, I think, A, we took, we, we kept people employed last year, we're asked to do that. Our, our individuals, Mr. Pearson, worked every day. As we know, there's been situations that have not really been addressed, and, and that's, you know, I, I'll leave that up to the, to other individuals in this community, but our employees worked every day, um, and, and were paid for that. The other part is that, I, you know, when we're bringing people back, so we've been working on these plans all summer long. We've been bringing people back, knowing special populations, most of our staff that are supplementary work with those special populations, so, um, you know, to, to lay people off, to know we have to bring them back, and we need more staff, was, you know, these are calculations that, that, you know, we, we take into consideration, so, you know, and, and the other part, we're always fighting for dollars here, at least in my, my experience here. And, you know, we worked our butt off to have a good working relationship, meeting with the, with the town manager and the finance director every single week, but I find that we really don't have a dialogue with the council, uh, maybe individuals do, but I find that puts us at such a disadvantage in terms of the budget. I mean, we're trying to dig out, we're saying, Mr. Murray was absolutely right. We're saying that, you know, we're putting this plan together, but realistically, this plan could fall apart in a couple of weeks, because we don't have the funds, so.
This is a, this is an excellent segue into my next question. Count, council works with the town manager's recommended budget, so this, I know, I know it's ultimately the town council's decision.
Yeah.
Um, they are on the hook for what they vote for and against, uh, as are we as a school committee. But the town manager presented a 0% increased budget last year. I, I, I know you and your staff, you and Sarah, uh, at least, have met with interim town manager Wazika and finance director Arnett. I have no idea right now. We're, we're going to this workshop next week, I have no idea what now, what, what we're walking into. You have not given us any inkling of what was discussed, and, and what they are going to be amenable to. So, do you have any comment, or are you able to comment on what the demeanor is, what the tone is, what the the feeling is of the interim town manager and the finance director, without putting words in their mouth? But I, I kinda wanna know what's been discussed, and what, what has, what is on the table for next week? So I'm not walking in blind, you know, uh, all full of, you know, as I am now, I'm kinda angry right now, because of our situation, not because of you, because of our situation. So, so what's happening next week?
Before, before you answer, Craig, I just wanna make a motion to extend the meeting past 10 o'clock.
I second the motion.
Kathy, you're on mute.
Uh, can we just raise our hands, if that's okay, for everyone? I see five hands. Okay, so are we extending past, uh, 10? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, um, I guess you can answer that question, Sarah.
Yes, so I, um, wish I had an answer, is the long and short of that. Um, I have requested several times, even for the range of what we could be given for a rainy day fund. And I have not even received that information. So the previous format of the budget, which was the one that had the red columns on it, that I presented almost every other meeting, um, until this one, John Arnett did have that copy, so we had had discussions, the need was well-known. I would say that I did not get any information about what the intent was, whether it be for general operations or for, um, COVID response. Even, even what we could ask for based on charter for what we could get for a rainy day fund amount. So, um, I know we had a school committee member that also reached out and, and asked if they could help push that initiative, and I said, absolutely, if you can get it, please do so, because, um, I would say, I don't know what we're walking into next year, but, um, next year, next week.
So they haven't even presented any, any kind of budget information for the next round?
I don't think that's fair, you know, you know, James, I don't think that's fair. I really don't.
Fair or not, disappointing is, is more, more the answer. I mean, this goes to, you know, there's a, so, there's a gap in the charter, um, and, and it was kind of a shameful display that during the charter amendment discussion in town council, they wouldn't fill this gap, and the gap is, is such that they're not required, there's no timeline for them to put forward another budget, and, and it's, it's awful. They can wait till June if they wanted to. Reprehensible, they should have a timer, it should be 30 to 60 days, something by which, you know, is reasonable for everyone to, to get back into normal operating mode. Because not only are we on a month-to-month appropriation, uh, spend cycles, so are they, at least I hope they are, because they're not being transparent about it. As, as I appreciate Sarah is, because, you know, I did push for it, and I was pushy. But I think that, that level of transparency is important to show, we're doing our part, we're doing the right thing, we're following the rules. Let's move forward and, and get, get, get a budget passed, so we can at least get out of this month-to-month mess, and, and hopefully fix our other budget problems. That's all I'm gonna ramble on for. I appreciate the honest feedback. I know it's challenging and difficult, and we don't wanna burn bridges. So, thank you.
Thank you, James. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. My final comment on this is, again, um, I, I don't know what to expect next week. As, as a school committee, I think we definitely need to, to ask for the highest amount that we're able to receive for, from the taxpayer. So the 4% that we originally asked for, the 1.8. Um, I also think that they, in fact, our, our interim town manager did in fact allude to the fact that there would be money from the rainy day fund that could be used for COVID expenses. And I, and I do believe that, that, that we should push for that as well. there would be money from the rainy day fund that could be used for COVID expenses. And I, and I do believe that, that, that we should push for that as well. Um, what I do think, and, and I have to agree with, with, uh, Mr. Murray and maybe other people that might have said this. Um, we need to, to lie at the town council's feet. The responsibility that we will not continue our reopening plan as presented tonight if we don't have the money. And so I think we need to have a stop date that we can tell them. So in other words, obviously Monday is going to be here before our meeting. So we're going to start some kind of reopening with pre-K, K and our special populations. I think we really need to know as a school committee if that's it. If we don't pass the budget, because obviously we're, we're not going to pass the budget until October sometime. That is one that's good for. Whatever that might be, even if half of the 1.8, whatever tax levy they want to put on for the referendum, we'll hopefully maybe have estimates by their next meeting or by this meeting on Wednesday, when they talk to us about what they, maybe the recommendation is. But if the number doesn't come even close to the 1.8, even if they offer us COVID money to help with safety, we won't be able to open schools any further than, you know, the pre-K anyway. And, and I think everybody needs to know that. I think the public today, you know, we've gone down to 155 attendees. I think most people, most parents who've got that plan today said, oh, great, we're opening schools. And there's a nice detailed plan and it's going to happen within the next four or five weeks. And great, we have something to work with. Unfortunately, it's a dream. It's a dream. We were asked by the state to provide a plan without the money to back it up. And so unless the town council agrees to put forth a budget that taxes our citizens to X amount and agrees to give us money from the rainy day fund, we're dead in the water. We can put every plan we want and send it to our parents. And within two weeks, we're going to have to say, sorry, we can't do anymore. It's all going to go to distance learning. And, and never mind sports, our clubs or extracurricular. And I think parents need to know that. Um, I don't know how we go about telling them that, but at the next meeting, I want to be able to say to the town council, the town manager and to Mr. Arnett that if we don't get a budget that gives us some money toward the 1.8 and a guarantee for rainy day funds for COVID, we are not going to reopen in any phased way that was discussed tonight. It will not happen. So that's the reality. Um, I'd like to know if we stop at phase one, um, if we can tell them that. Would we go to, um, phase two? Would we have enough money? I don't have a clear idea myself in the sense of what our cash flow is like every month. Um, I don't know. Well, I think we all know we can't spend money we don't have. We can't deficit spend. So I think it's critical for us to go to next week's meeting saying, we have a great plan, but it can't happen if we don't have the money. Um, and that's really all I have to say about, about this budget request.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very good.
Any other comments? So, Mr. Murray?
Yes, sorry, Ed. And, and by the way, I think you're on target with setting a date. Um, I think the more we, the more we state our position and the fact that there's a backstop here, the better. Um, also, um, just along the lines of a rainy day fund, you know, I can see them coming at us with, they don't want to, they've said over and over again, maintenance of effort is a concern. And I've said over and over, well, if you don't give us the money next year, it's not going to, we're not going to feasibly have enough wiggle room next year to even cover expense. Um, and it's likely they will come back at us with the rainy day fund only scenario. And so to your point, I think we need to be out of that. There's two parts of the equation here. One is the one-time expenses and the other is the actual operations. Um, if they come at us with the 1.5, as Sarah said, and Sarah, you can correct me if I'm wrong, with a small portion that they're willing to put forward with an FDM, they're feeling maybe that we're covering the COVID and everything else goes away. And this is what also parents need to know. That, yeah, we may be able to cover the COVID expenses with that, but everything else still goes away. Sports, activities, everything we cut. So if you want everything to go back to full operation with sports and all, everything we had, there's, there's two parts of the equation. Sarah, I have one last question here. Um, I'm looking at the top line numbers. So the 747 that we are getting prospectively ever going to get from the state in a reimbursement scenario. Um, is that factored down bottom? Cause I'm not seeing it in our, in our request. So is that reduced on the top line? And, and as we filter down, is that considered as a reduction?
Right. Well, so the, the $3,006,62 as total COVID expense, I reduce by the $1,777. So I, I didn't, I didn't break it out separately. I just said, here's our total revenue available and here's our total expenditures we need to cover.
So it would be clear if that was brought down to the bottom line, because I think it's kind of skipped over. Like you have estimated response cost, then you have the red at the 2584. I'm assuming that assumes the reduction of the 1077.
So, well, just to go back up, if you're looking at the, so from the top down, you have the 72 million net of revenue and then jumping down to the expenditures, you have the 72 million net of expenditures under operation.
Got it.
Okay. So that's general operations from federal or COVID response. Under the revenue, you have 1,077. And then you have expenditures of 3.6 for COVID. So the, the 1 million of, 1,077 of revenue is offsetting the 3.6 million in COVID expenditures, which brings us down to the 2.58 net.
Okay. I think it's just the way I read. And I think there was some questions in the chat on this and I was even scratching my head. So I don't know if there's another way. If, if, if I'm not getting it, although it is 10 o'clock at night and my eyes are starting to get a little glassy still. Um, but just for the benefit of others, if there's a way we can display it, um, it would be helpful because I just want people to know that that is factored in, like we're factoring in those funds.
Yes.
And by the way, it's reimbursement based, which we don't have any money actually really put out there to get the money back. So, um, I mean, we're really over barrel here. When you say, you know, you're, you're stretching it tight. And I'll say this last thing regards to sports, because I know a lot of people had asked me uh, about, are there creative ways to do clubs, do sports? I think that's a conversation that needs to be had at another day. Right now, we need to focus on the budget conversation. I, I do agree that there may be creative ways to do onesie twosies, but again, it goes back, we've talked about this in the past. Once you allow, like, it's a slippery slope, because once you allow one activity and that activity is going, then do you need to try to figure out ways to afford other activities? Because those, you know, certain kids are engaged in certain and it becomes into a big headache discussion, right? Um, I did reach out to the assistant athletic director to ask about parent coaches, just because I got inquiry. Is it possible? Yeah. But there's, there's a huge amount of lift in understanding the rules of Interscholastic League and all the things that go along with the time commitment, everything else. We already do have some parents who help out. We have booster clubs. We have a variety of things. So the, the, I just wanted to put it out there as, as part of the budgetary conversation. Is it possible? Yeah. Is it probable? I don't know. But right now I think we all, including parents, need to keep our eye on the ball, which is go the straightforward route. Try to, try to get the funds we need to operate the district because even if we have to go creative this year, it's likely if we get shorted this year, next year, next year is even going to be worse. And we know that because I mean, it's of effort, it's going to continue to be down. And we'll have no place to cut. We'll have to cover salaries and all the benefit load and everything else we have to cut. So I just wanted to put that out there in the context. So parents understand it's not that simple. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Um, I think that's it for the school committee. So why don't we bring it out to the public? I see a couple of hands raised, Mr. Murphy.
Okay. Yes.
Um, hi. Yes, I, I spoke earlier, Jen Marslick, 7 Tammerant Trail. Um, I, I know I've spoken on this issue before. I've also reached out several times this week with the, um, suggestion of Luke Murray to include all of our council and also CC, all of the school committee members on the emails. And, and I thank most of you for your very prompt and responses to all of us that have been sending emails. However, the majority of us have not heard a word from our council. So I, I really don't even know how to go about this any further. This is total frustration to watch our kids slip into anxiety, depression, needing counselors of their own before the school year even starts. So I ask you guys now, I understand the need for PPE and COVID supplies and cleaning supplies. I'm a nurse. I get it. We're going through thousands of N95 masks a week, just where I work alone, gowns, gloves. We can't keep up. I mean, we have the supplies, but just the space to store them is an issue at this point. So I, I understand that end and I understand we have to have a budget and safety comes first, but I will ask you this. As I've said before, this is going to affect Coventry in the long run. It's going to start immediately. It's going to go through next year and many years to come. I understand, or many people have thrown out the figure of $15,000 per student to go out of district. Students will go wherever they can next year. There are going to be lots of eighth graders and they're already speaking of it from this middle school coming up in this class of 2025. You're going to have a very small class of 2025 coming up after this year. Parents are going to take their kids elsewhere. They're, they're just, they're not going to trust anyone anymore. Th- this is unheard of. I mean, you are taking a part of these kids' mental and physical well-being. And I know you're not just disregarding it. I, I know that. But there has to be, we have to look deeper and cut somewhere else. Now we're looking at, even if we come to put a budget forth, an all-day referendum, that might not happen till the end of October. So what then? Do the fall kids get left out? Well, that's not really fair. So put a little money forth, let those kids go forth. And you, you know what? I, I, I'm going to have to trust that maybe at the end of the day, this council who thinks they don't have to respond to their districts will maybe do the right thing. I ask you guys as our school committee and other members that are on tonight to stand with us and join us against the council next week in our rally Tuesday. We are going to have a peaceful rally with masks, parents, students invited from all grades, all schools, the flyer is all over social media already. And we're going to demand better for our kids. We're going to demand better. It's working in Connecticut. It's worked in Colorado. It's worked in New Jersey and it's going to work for us. If you really think that our kids deserve better, then please come stand with us next week. What do you have to lose? I don't think you have to lose anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
That leads to a question. If we were to do that, open the meeting.
Yeah.
I'm assuming it applies.
I'm sorry, what did you just say?
If we were to do, if we were to engage in that, open meetings if we had multiple members.
It doesn't matter as long as we're not, as long as we're not discussing school committee, um, whatever.
Please get advocating for it, so.
We can, we can all march if we want to or pick it or, or go to a, a, a community event together.
Yeah, I know we've marched before. It's just mostly
Where's the meeting?
related. So.
Luke, Luke, where's the meeting?
That's true. I just want to talk to you, Jen.
Yeah, I want to go.
I, I, Jen, I certainly support the effort. I mean, I don't think, you know, we've all supported the budget. Um, I wish it was easy to just make a cut. Right now, you know, as I said earlier, it's, it's, once, you know, may look as just track and field or just tenants, but then once you start down there, you really have to consider the kids in every grade group and all of the activities we cut, to cut it as a group. So had we, had we been able to take a scalpel, I would have loved to. But it's not, in the interest of fairness and equity, it really, it's not fair and equitable to pick and choose. So the, you're going about it the right way. I think the best thing we can do is stand together as a community advocating for the students. I appreciate the efforts and I'd be glad to stand with you.
Me too.
Luke, where and when is the meeting? What time and where?
For the, the, um,
Tuesday.
demonstration. Uh, to be honest with you, I can't remember off the top of my head. I, I am not putting it together. I'm just saying I'll stand with them.
No, I didn't know, because, uh, I do work till six, but I'd be willing to go down there after.
I would, I would ask Jen if she's still listening to send an email to all the committee members with an invitation.
The annex at 6:00. I just saw someone.
Oh, okay.
So she says, I'm all annexed at 6:00. So.
Okay.
But I'll be there. I work till 6:00 on Tuesday. So.
All right. Well, we'll have to be part of the group. Um, I think there's still some hands up, Mr. Murphy.
If you could see an address to the, uh, your mic.
Do you mind? I'll see them pulled in. Oh, there we go.
Thank you. Um, I wasn't, it wasn't coming up for me to unmute. This is Karen, uh, Delone. I spoke earlier again. Um, and thank you once again, Jen. I, I, I think we're living parallel lives here. Um, Mrs. Pat Nod, I want to thank you for what you mentioned about the number of people leaving the meeting, um, thinking that great, you know, there's a, there's a plan in place. We've got, you know, five phases moving forward. There's some, you know, some light at the end of this tunnel. They, there was some, you know, some energy coming out of this. Um, and for those who did leave the meeting, think one way. And those of us who are now listening and stay tuned through the budget process and listening to the presentation, I now feel completely different than I did an hour ago. So I don't know if it's possible going forward, you know, with the next meeting to maybe do the budget process and discussion first. So the parents in the majority hear the impact that it is really having and then go on to the, um, new phases or, or whatever changes may take place next week for the reopening. I think, I think that may have a better impact. Um, we as collectively as parents are ready, you know, going Tuesday, standing where we need to stand. Um, I want to thank Mr. Pearson. Um, I reached out to, he responded by email. I am in District Five, obviously, and the councilwoman there never replies at all, crickets, nothing. I don't know what else to do. Um, and like Jen, it's very frustrating. And if there's, you know, any recommendations from this committee as to what else we can do, I, I'm open, I'm opening up whatever else I can do, I will do.
Um, thank you so much. I think that, that idea about doing budget first is, um, a good idea. Um, and we'll try to think about some ways. I mean, at least Tuesday, you're going to have a, a rally. So maybe if that gets out on social media, um, and people know that our ability to move forward with our reopening plan is really all about the budget, then, then it's going to be, uh, important that folks know that and put some pressure on the town council and, um, and go forward with a budget and have them go forward with a budget that we can vote on and, and get maintenance of effort. I think it's already been stated once previously and I, I'll I think it's already been stated once previously and I'll reiterate it again. If we are level, close to level funded by the taxpayers, i.e. the maintenance of asset that we're, we're given to work with, whatever that number is, it, it has to be enough to sustain us next year. One-time expenditures from the general, you know, the rainy day fund will not help us next year. So it all really, it will just put up a structural deficit that if we think this year's going to be tough, next year would be, will be even tougher. And it will be a question of laying off lots and lots of teachers and eliminating programs, never mind sports and co-curricular and all that stuff that comes with educating our children. So we're in dire straits and I think the public needs to know that.
Right. And at, at one point, you know, I know, I know the election's coming up in November and, and many of us are talking, you know, we, we need to elect the people who we know will support. So is, at that point, is it already too late for a budget? Is the damage already done? Or, you know, can the newly elected members of council stand, come in and help and correct?
Well, some things could be changed if, if the new council decides to do a second tax note. So let's say we do pass a budget at the end of October that does not cover all of our needs. That does not preclude the council for, for asking for another all-day referendum with a, with an increase for our budget. So that is a possibility. I think, I'm not a huge charter, knowledge, I'm not a huge expert on our charter, but I seem to remember hearing that even from our interim town manager who said we could potentially go out to the public again. There's nothing that says we can't ask for a tax increase to the public a second time. So we could have another bite at the apple. But I'm very hopeful that we have enough support in this community that the town council realizes that, that we should get first the maintenance of asset that we need for this year and next year, which is that 1.8 million, and then to follow up with the COVID expenses of 1.6 from the rainy day. Because we won't need those hopefully next year, but we do need the rainy day fund this year as well, and that's what it's there for.
Right.
But we need the maintenance of effort as well, so.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Karen.
This is Jay. If you could unmute your microphone, your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Jessica, 376 Chaplin Drive. I appreciate that Luke is, Luke Murray and both James Pearson trying to press the budget question. And one of the big things that came to mind as I'm listening through this and hearing everybody talk is we're talking a lot internally about what we're requesting, what we're budgeting. And one question that came into mind is have we asked the town council what money the town has saved in light of things possibly having been shut down during COVID? For instance, the library being shut down. And had there been any savings from that period of time where town offices or town had been shut down? And that may help us in our positioning in terms of asking for this budget?
I don't know how, I don't have an answer for that. I'm not sure if any other committee member.
I do. I know for a fact that they did, there was some savings and I think they got a new truck, if I wasn't, if I'm not mistaken, last, last year. So I think that is what, what happened with some of their savings.
Yeah, I, I, what you're referring to, DPW came quickly as well. Under the, it was, it was clearly apparent at the end they used fiscal 20 money to, from carryover. And that kind of patched up some budget for the fiscal year '21, which supposedly they've lost. So it, to answer your question, it's typically a one-way conversation. When we ask, they won't answer, but they certainly expect us to give them a full itemized breakdown. I do know that, you know, and again, I'm not throwing people under the bus, but I'd be remiss if I didn't bring it up. The union has in a contract that they're in emergency declaration, which was clearly meant for snow and other short-term events, that they'd be paid time and a half. And Sarah, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But they opted to do a week on, week off. Week on work, week off. And I'm not throwing people under the bus. That was part of their contract, they on in the contract. But as a taxpayer, and I'm just weighing in as a taxpayer, it was very frustrating because I believe it's still going, is it still going on, Sarah? Do you know?
I would have to confirm, and I just want to clarify, that's the municipal union. That's not our.
It's not ours, that is the municipal union.
Yes.
And yeah, it's not to throw them under the bus, but to the point where the school district as a department is, is sort of seen as, you know, and having its own elected body, I think sometimes is, is seen as less than. Let's put it out there, that we're, we're answerable only one way. And quite honestly, we're both elected bodies of the town. Our budget's two, two-thirds more. If anybody, you know, we have the same accountability and we should both be accountable, accountable on both sides of the aisle. Likewise, we should both work together on both sides of the aisle when these issues come up. It shouldn't be a knockdown, drag-out. So this should have been in conversations that have been going on for months. We've been asking to come to the table. Next week, we'll have that opportunity. We can certainly ask whether we get an answer or not. We'll see.
Thank you.
Okay, up next is Brooke, if you could state your name and address.
Brooke Kelly, 28 Audubon Lane. And I just have a question, maybe on some clarification, as I believe it was Karen spoke before me, that obviously we're well after 10 o'clock and a lot of parents might have missed this budget portion. So if I understand correctly, Mr. Levis was stating that if the budget is not passed, he would not continue on with his phases. And I, I truly think that that would be a game changer for a lot of parents just to be able to plan. It's something, I'm almost second guessing my decision of putting my kids in school right now because I really need a job and I can't afford to have to lose a job or do anything like that. So if there's any way that, you know, you guys as council or somebody can send out some sort of a quick synopsis of what needs to be done on Tuesday to get a budget passed and how serious it is, I think that would help for anybody that missed this portion of the meeting, but.
The meeting's Wednesday. Am I, am I correct, Mr. Levis? Wednesday, the 16th is.
Wednesday, sorry.
No, that's okay.
So Brooke, to answer your question, I will try to work on something. I'm not sure, Mr. Levis, if we could send that out like we sent out the phase plan?
I mean, I, I, I think that there's, there's ways of communicating. It's just, I mean, I'm going to say fact. I, I, I'm sure there's a way that we can communicate just the summary of this, this discussion. The fact that, you know, Brooke and others are right that, you know, I mean, we did mention, I did, I know it was just a very quick, quick blur, but I did mention before Mr. Coward started that it was all going to hinge on the budget. But I do take the points, the valid points, and we need to make sure the community understands that. You know, as well as, you know, like there's deadlines in terms of, I shared a document with the school committee, deadlines on athletics and things like that. So that, you know, where, you know, those are things that need to be communicated. After tonight, I'll communicate that information to the council also. Plus, I think we'll share this budgetary information with the council and with the town interim town manager and finance director so that, as Mr. Pearson said, you know, we may be blindsided, but we don't, you know, we want to be clear. I want to make sure that they have the information, they know what we're presenting. And, and I'm hoping that they ask good questions, so.
Yeah.
That'll be a first.
I hope kids thrive on structure and it would totally ruin a lot of kids if they went to school for two weeks and suddenly they're transitioning to distance learning and now parents are scrambling. So just to be more transparent, like I didn't quite understand when you said it all hinged on budget. I thought that other things would be lost, not, kids would not continue on in the phases. So I'm glad that I was stayed on and that's clarified, but it may be a big miss for other parents as well, so.
Yes, thank you. I really do think we need to send something out that says that the reopening, reopening plan has been well thought out and that they did receive that document. It's on our website, but it all hinges on getting a budget passed by the town in an all-day referendum and that, you know, we really do need X amount of dollars in order to do that. Otherwise, we'll only go to phase one and the rest is, is not going to happen. I think that needs clearly indicated to parents. Right, if I had stayed with the, if I had gotten that document today, I would have said, oh my gosh, look at this, this is great. We've got a plan. I wouldn't have realized, oh, this really is hinging on a budget. And like, we're down to 128 people and I think originally we were in the 300, so. And, and, and so I think it really needs to get out there. I'm not sure exactly the best way, the vehicle to do that, but it needs to, it needs to get out there. So thank you, Brooke.
No problem. Thank you for all your hard work.
Ms. Patnold? Just want to say too that part of this is, you know, so I'm, we're throwing out, I'm throwing out what I perceive will take place. But there are also legal. So an issue is Department of Ed says that running out of money, funding is not a reason to go to distance learning. So, you know, safety to me is, but there may be other procedural legal actions that we need to take. And so before I put anything out, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't speak to Mr. Anderson to make sure that whatever, you know, what I'm putting out is, is, is proper. Because maybe we can't close. Maybe we have to run a school, but we don't have the funds. So what, you know, what, what are those steps? What I'm saying is that if we don't have, if we can't operate safely, then we, I don't see how we can operate, right? And that's always been our commitment. So, but I, I just want to, you know, step back and reflect and say that I believe I'll have a conversation tomorrow with Mr. Anderson because I don't want to speak out of turn. Because like I said, RIDE has stated that funding, running out of funds is not a reason to go to distance learning. So just to be clear, we're not going to operate schools if we don't have the personnel that we need to provide safe environment. But there may be other steps that we have to take and I don't know what those are. So just to make sure I get that out here now.
Okay. All right, thank you for the, thank you for that.
Can I just add quickly to that? I don't know, you know, we're talking about the 1.8 and the 1.5 somewhat together and, and hinging it to the budget. I don't know if there is a legal way in which the town could authorize that rainy day fund outside of a budget referendum in an emergency situation. And that would be one for the legal, you know, the two attorneys to discuss. Because if we just play this out from a purely financial perspective and a normal pre-COVID year, if this was our situation, we, we would have to move forward with opening and I would have to file a corrective action plan with the state saying I'm going to run a deficit and here's my plan to fix it. So a lot of times, the plan to fix it is to use fund balance, which is what the rainy day fund is. So I just, there could be a potential way to make sure that we continue to open as far as the phases, if we can get access to the rainy day funds of 1.5 million. But normal operations, clubs, sports, all of that, wouldn't be able to come back until an actual budget with the 1.8 restored came in. So I think that that might be the way to push it because I think if we tied both the 1.5 and the 1.8 into a budget referendum, we're, we're going to be way too far into October. And I think by then I would have to make filings with the state saying I think I'm going to run a deficit this year. So I just wanted to throw that out. I did email John Anderson while we were on this just to see what his guidance is. But that would be, if it's legal, that would be my recommended approach is to push for that 1.6 outside of the budget referendum and then push for the 1.8 as part of the operating budget referendum, if it's legal.
That, that's, that's wonderful to hear. I was, I had thought and wondered about that, if they could just, you know, upfront for 1.6 and then, and then we could, and, and continue with the reopening. So that, hopefully we'll have an answer on that by Mr. Anderson and/or the town. Because one way or the other, we don't have enough money to continue the reopening with what we have, so.
Sarah, I, I actually was running under the assumption it wouldn't go through an FDM process for the rainy day. Because I think when they spoke before, it's typically coming out of fund balance. I'm assuming like, just like they float sometimes to the sewer fund or other items. They don't, they don't go to financial town meeting for those expenses. It's, it's basically, it could be essentially a loan. And we, we had talked a little bit about if the council is uncomfortable with just floating a set amount, doing more of a drawdown situation. So they have some control over, you know, monitoring the expenses as we spend on COVID-related. So if there's a concern that this money will go elsewhere, we could provide some surety on it. So it would be an up-to authorization. So that may be an option, but I, it's a, thank you for your input on that, Sarah. It helped.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I think we still have some hands raised, Mr. Murphy.
Okay, Anne Marie, you're next.
Hi, my name is Anne Marie Moore. I'm 25 Catalpa Way. First off, you're going to have a battle with the town. I, my husband works for a different town and he works on the municipal side, though at one point in the past, he worked on the school side. And the town is going to cry poverty. It's really hard in a situation where people aren't paying their taxes and, you know, valid or invalid. And, and I've mentioned the last time I spoke that the community needs to come together and, you know, go to the town hall and go to the state and talk to Gina and so forth. But there's also a amount of personal responsibility. So if you can pay your taxes, you should pay your taxes. And if you can protect your children and keep them at home and follow all of the COVID stuff, then the teachers shouldn't have to be afraid because everyone could understand as a community, we're doing what's best for everyone as a community. I keep my kids at home. They're not, you know, you know, out there doing stuff because I was hoping they'd be able to go back to their classes and they would be able to, you know, hopefully support in a, in a safe arena. The other thing is the town's going to be asking, you know, and someone has to advocate for the, the community needs to advocate for the school against the town because they're going to say, well, what did the school do? Like some people were mentioning, you know, we closed down. So teachers are still getting paid, you know, the maintenance was still there. What about heat, gas, electric, whatever? But then you can turn around and say, well, what did the town do at this point? Because I know other towns sent their people away and they got paid through the state and not through the town. I mean, there's, there's lots of things that need to be investigated if we're going to go a full monty and say the town, we need money. And that's kind of basically it. I want, I want the community to stand up against the town council. But at the same point, we also need to say, well, this is what our commitment is to do the right thing. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Anne Marie.
Okay, up next is Tricia. You can say your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Sure, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, Tricia Hunt. I'm on Camp Westwood Road. So I am new to Western Coventry and new to having a child in school. So I've been attending kind of all of these meetings, listening, trying to understand the process. So for the meeting on Wednesday, can the public speak like you allow it at this school committee meeting? Because I feel like that's what helps us to get our voice heard. Is this same process for a town council meeting?
Unfortunately, they, 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 they don't have to. If it's on their agenda, the citizens comment at the end, then yes, citizens will be able to comment. I haven't seen the agenda. I don't think I've seen the agenda for Wednesday night's meeting. I don't think it's been posted yet. There's a very good chance that it'll just be me and town council that are able to speak. There's a very good chance that it'll just be me and town council that are able to speak, and the public will just be viewing, and they will not be given a voice, unfortunately.
Okay, well, that, no, that helps me to under, my next question was, what could I say at the meeting to help? But I'll pass on that question because it's so late. My last question, or it's more of just a suggestion, was just, if you're trying to get the message out to parents, I know for me, as a new parent with a kindergartner and understanding how social media works, I feel like when Mr. Levis does the kind of quick YouTube videos, I feel like it's, I don't know if he's the one that's allowed to give out that information, but those were fast ways for me to understand what was going on, or it was just a very visual way for me. And I know Mr. Murray's, you know, has a social media presence that I'm able to follow and understand. So I feel like those avenues of social media are just helpful in you trying to get the message out about the budget really hinging on, or the, I'm sorry, the phases hinging on the budget. So that was just my general comment, and thank you all for all your hard work.
Well, thank you, Tricia.
Tricia, can I just chime in? I just want everyone to know, I did send an email to Council President G a week ago, requesting that he provide a public comment portion. I carbon copied everyone on council, and I, it was cricket. So I'm going to assume they're going to go either by the normal format, which is comments at the end, or no comments at the end. So I apologize. I wanted to say, welcome to Western. This isn't a typical year. It's a great school. You're going to love Mrs. A. And if you haven't already, we do have listserv through our website that you can sign up for. You should be getting emails from the schools, Twitter, and I believe there is a Facebook. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm, I'm on the Facebook, and I am on listserv, so thank you so much. And thanks for the welcome. It's been very nice here so far.
Great. Thanks, Tricia.
Okay, now we have Joshua. Joshua, if you could state your name and address for the record, and unmute your microphone.
Hi, this is Josh Clements, 10 Gentry Farm Drive. I have a new student starting in kindergarten, and I appreciate the committee's effort to secure the future of Coventry schools and make sure we're looking forward. Appreciate committee member Pearson's focus on where we could have saved in the past and how we could set ourselves up better for that future. And I appreciate committee member Murray and your focus on, you know, devil's advocate and being ready and prepared for the town council meeting next week. Thank you to the parents out there who are advocating for our students. Look forward to meeting some of you next Tuesday at 6:00 PM. I am not on social media. I am a social recluse, so I appreciate this forum and the, you know, opportunity to learn from all of you. So I think it comes down to personal accountability, just like with COVID, voting matters. So I ask everyone here who is still attending, you know, "How did you vote in the town-wide referendum?" You know, ask your peers, "How did they vote?" You know, it's not just the town council's obligation to put forth the budget. The voting matters, and it has to pass, and it failed by 144 votes, you know, 950 votes to 1,044. So there's not many people that can shift that balance should it come up for another referendum. And I guess my last question, my question to the committee is, have we asked the state for money? Is there money available in, in the funds that, that are out there? Thank you for your time. Thank you for all your work and, you know, the five-hour committee meetings that have been going on. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Joshua. Sarah?
So just on the, on the state funds, no, we haven't gotten any guidance on additional funds. And I, I would say we've definitely been vocal in stating that we need funds, and even above and beyond needing additional funds, we need certainty of the state funds that we currently have in the budget, because even those aren't secure right now. So I, I would say that a, a lot of the finance directors have been pushing as hard as we can at RIDE to get answers. Unfortunately, I don't know if that message isn't getting all the way up to the state level, or, you know, the reality is, we have an $800 million deficit at the state level, too. So, and outside of the federal funds that we've received, there wasn't, there wasn't an additional stimulus package that came for schools like everybody was hoping. So the reality is, is I, I just don't even know if those funds are there as the current budget exists at the state level.
And we did pass a joint resolution that specifically requested additional aid. That was, Donna, I'm assuming that was sent to the state and all the people on our extensive list, which we've heard crickets. So to Sarah's point, I've, I've had some discussions with some pretty influential house leaders. They, they're in a holding pattern, because the truth is, they're waiting for federal funds, and they're not going to do anything until they have an indication that they're either not going to get those funds or they do get them. So it's, it's unlikely we'll see any of that, because they're probably sitting on a billion dollars that they do not want to spend, so unfortunately, we're on our own.
Okay. Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Mr. Murray. I don't see any more hands raised, Mr. Murphy. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Then I think we can move to agenda item number nine, the superintendent's report. Mr. Levis?
I'm not going to jinx myself by saying I'll be brief, but I'm not going to go on ongoing planning and preparation. I think we've talked enough about that, FY21. I think, I think part of that, though, is, is our strategy for next Wednesday. And I, I really appreciate, you know, how Sarah kind of ended this in terms of, you know, maybe the direction we should go in, and, you know, we'll have to talk and, and put something together, perhaps, Sarah, once we know more, and share it with the school committee. So the other part is just walkthrough. So, you know, the, all the conversation around the state with the governor and these alleged inspections, which really are inspections. Sarah, myself, Jason Martin, Don Coward, I think we met on Tuesday with the walkthrough team. There were two individuals from the Department of Business Regulations, three individuals from the National Guard. We, we spent an hour with them and went over a checklist. They broke up into two groups. One did four schools, one did three schools. They were done before noon. And I had a conversation with Christine Lopes Metcalf from the Department of Ed and the School Building Authority today. And we should be getting our report. I think our report will be fine, that, you know, we're going to have the things that we need to do in place for Monday. You know, so again, once I get that report, I will share it with everybody. I have not received, I received a document that really didn't make any sense, and I called, left a message, and then that's when she called me and said to not send that out, wait till they give me a updated document. So that's, that's where we stand. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Did anybody on the committee have a question or comment for Mr. Levis? I don't see anybody raising their hand, so we can move on to citizens' comments. So I think the citizens probably have commented all they wanted, but I'll give them a few minutes, a few seconds here to raise any hands. Seeing none. We can go to agenda item number 11, which is scheduling the next meeting. Do I have a motion? Do I mute Dave?
There we go. Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I make a motion. Hold on. Here we go. Madam Chair, I make a motion that the next virtual meeting of the school committee be scheduled for Thursday, September 24th, 2020, at 6:00 PM.
I second the motion. Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Kathy Patnou?
Yes.
Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Colonian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. And do I have a motion to adjourn? I have 10:49 PM.
Madam Chair, make, Madam Chair, make a motion that the meeting be adjourned at 10:49 PM.
Second.
All in favor, just raise your hand. Okay. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, everyone, for another long meeting, but very informative. And to all our attendees, good night, and hope to see you at our next meeting on Wednesday with the town council. And hopefully, we'll see some of you on Monday, on Tuesday, Tuesday for March. Right. Okay.
Bye, everyone.